All right, it is four o'clock and this meeting will come to order. First thing is roll call and both trustee Blank and trustee Robinson contacted me and said that they would not be available today and trustee Hanley is on my phone. Oh, yes, thank you, I'm so present. So the first thing is, I can be gents. Next thing, right? I need the reasons, say.
The reasons of students' life. Spades where. As you're relying for which it stands. What is your background? And the business of my whole to the perfections.
All right. All right, so our next item is discussion of your goals overall and reconsideration. I believe that we were on page two and we left off. After the second paragraph under request for relocation of material harmful to minors. If you have the latest version, the orange text was in request for reconsideration of material. We are in the request for relocation of material harmful to minors. Is there an extra? You know, maybe just. In the static.
That's caused by the cell interference with the speaker.
All right, nevermind, it's my phone. Well, then he, well, I guess.
Just move it away from your phone.
Okay, I will have to bring the phone closer. And.
Reacquire the speaker phone.
Yeah, so I heard you fine, I've got you on speakerphone, so. Alrighty, alright, so that paragraph had. Multiple.
This one, the lines, the third one.
Yes. Attorney Boils, did you have a rewrite of that paragraph?
I prepared to discuss it, but I struggled to. Condense the ideas of that paragraph. And it's, I struggled with writing just one paragraph of the policy. I could set forth a statement of the law related to, you know, Miller and Pico. But like we did discuss last meeting, Pico solely about removal of books from a public school library. So I mean, I'd be happy to work on it more, but I just don't, I didn't feel like I got to the point where I had something that I would want to. Inject into the policy midstream. And I didn't quite understand, I think, the objective of, of the paragraph. So I try not to burn through too much time on it.
Okay. Some response?
So. I think we can remove. The aspects of the paragraph that have to do with Miller. Or removal, because this, or this section is only about relocation, so the Miller part was about removal. What I intended when I wrote that is use the line of reasoning on how to decipher a book that people case used. I don't think that has anything to do with whether it's a. What kind of library it is, what I'm proposing is use the line of reasoning they had that you can. Look. Sections and if they're pervasively vulgar as, as they said, that this is just for relocation. It's not for removal. So Pico was about removal and Miller is about removal. So this was just a concept of how to simplify the. Process for relocation. I don't know if that helps legal counsel and just, it's just. The criteria to, to move, relocate a book. Is the thinking that Supreme Court used in Pico case. And it's not about removal.
Okay, so it sounds like you're for removing all the lines that have been crossed out. I am also good with that, trustee Hannah?
Your job.
I guess their paragraph that starts with decisions to and then remove or has been crossed out. Okay, so we'll be removing to remove or. Version. And also the when considering cases which may involve material harmful to minors that whole sentence has been crossed out. Okay, do we have any further changes on the paragraph at this time? Yes, go ahead.
Um. Earlier, the trustee said it doesn't matter what kind of library, whether it's a school or public. And it does matter because school libraries have different procedures, different standards, different laws. So we do need to be aware of what our attorney said last time, which is that the Pico case applies to. School libraries, not to public libraries, so it is a little concerning that that's not what is being understood. And also, as I mentioned in our last meeting, the definition of pervasively vulgar is really hard. To have staff understand, like, what is that? Is that one staff member's judgment or is that if there are two words in the entire book? That it's pervasively vulgar, so I would need guidance in knowing how to, like, implement that or how to move forward. Trust us.
So this, this is just simply what I found and a little reference on what Supreme Court said. I'm sure if they dug out the case, they have more detail, so we could add more detail from the Supreme Court. Or we could just simply take the pervasively vulgar, that last sentence out and just say. You could use the criteria the Supreme Court. Set up in the Miller case or in the Pico case. That was just what I read about or what I found in the short summary of the Pico case. So that is, that is pervasively vulgar is the wording. And the very last part of the sentence, it quotes, is the wording that the Supreme Court used. So if they're using it in the decision, I. I assume there's more written in the Supreme Court case, but I'm willing to take it all out and just say, use either the. Miller case or the Supreme or the Pico case to decide when to move the book.
Bye, trustee Hanley.
Somewhere it courses of a particular piece of material are pervasively vulgar or whatever the terminology was there. Would that be sufficient? Apparently that's not looking at the book as a whole, but I don't think I still be wanting to anyway.
Trust us.
Well, that's fine with me, but that's kind of what the ending quote is. It could be in a single poem, a single chapter, a single page. So the vulgarity, the Supreme Court said it could be concentrated, but. They're the ones that use the word pervasively vulgar. I'm just suggesting that we broaden for relocation. The Idaho state law does not specify what the test is. The test is Miller definitely for removing the book, but. I'm just asking us to make it easier on ourselves about moving a book. I don't know that we're going to get. Fine if we move a book that. Somebody says we shouldn't, I don't already know what the risk is there. But I guess somebody could sue us for moving a book that shouldn't have been moved, but it's, I mean, it's a $250 fine if you. Don't move it. And who's going to levy that, so it has to go to court? How does the $250 fine get enforced or implemented?
I think it's $250 plus attorney fees on those. And I think we should talk about Pico a little bit because Pico was a plurality opinion, meaning. That no one group of the majority voted for the majority or the opinion. And so Justice Brennan, Justice Marshall, Justice Stevens and Justice Blackman authored. Or they, they. They, they sort of said, yeah, we agree with this, but Blackman joined except for part two A1. And then you had several dissents in Pico. And so in the plurality opinion, like the part of at the front where we say this is the binding law. It's partially the binding law, but the justices only use the term pervasive vulgarity one time. And. But it's really in the context of the motivation of the school board for removing the books. And then in the dissent, actually, the justices who've dissented. Chief Justice Berger, Justice Powell, Rehnquist and O'Connor. They mentioned how the, they're criticizing the plurality and they say the plurality tells us that a book may be removed. From a school library if it is quote pervasively vulgar, this is on 890. But why must the vulgarity be pervasive in quotes to be offensive? Vulgarity, they asked that question and then they make this statement. Vulgarity might be concentrated in a single poem or a single chapter or a single page, yet still be inappropriate. Or a school board might reasonably conclude that even quote random vulgarity is inappropriate for teenage school students. A school board might also reasonably conclude that the school board's retention of such books give those volumes an implicit endorsement. And so this, this quote about vulgarity in a, in a single poem, not in context. Was a, I think, a rhetorical statement made in criticism of the pluralities. Test that they call it. I forget the exact term, but they say educational unsuitability and pervasively vulgar is a standardless phrase. And so essentially that paragraph was their criticism of the plurality's adoption of a standardless holding in the case. And so that means, what's the test, what's the ABC, we don't know. And it's important though to put that in context of what the court does say that the principal question presented is that. Whether the First Amendment imposes limitations upon the exercise by a local school board. Of its discretion to remove library books from high school and junior high school libraries. And then one of the dissenters also quotes that. The plurality's analysis overlooks the fact that in this case, the government is acting in its special role as educator. And so she dissents from it based upon that, that aspect. And so I, I think the, the Pico case is an indication in 1982 where the court was likely to head. In grappling with the obscene materials and the harmful to minors analysis very early on. And one indication though that's clear is that. The state has a special power in regulating schools that the public libraries do not. And also that the. Discretion of the board. Has to be limited to what they say is a. Can't find the quote right offhand, but they essentially say this case would have been much different. Had the. School board. Enforced a facially valid process. And then since they deviated from the policy, they looked at the board's essentially motivation. Or the reasons why they were targeting that content. And so it's important that we adopt that process for the staff, essentially the ABC. And the state statute has a little bit of that in there, but you get to the end of the analysis with the harmful to minors, obviously, because that has baked in. What we're, what we're not arguing, but what we're discussing. And then that also includes though the context as a whole. And so I don't think that Pico stands for the proposition that. A, a public library could deviate from the contextual. Analysis, including the redeeming factors of artistic, literary, political and scientific when making a removal decision. And I think the similar test will apply to a relocation. Because the right to access information and a younger child's ability to access material in their section. Without being stigmatized is essentially going to be the same test. And so I don't think Pico is appropriate for a library. I think it goes too far and I don't think it's clear. And I think Miller applies to adults. And so what we need to do is dig in on the age-based, you're calling it appropriateness. Test where a professional librarian looks at factors we set out and they make that judgment call. And the farthest I've seen us go down that route was with Director Echols. Suggestion to characterize a type of nudity in a certain young age group and totally exclude that. That's an enforceable test, right? But using a pervasively vulgar test is already criticized by four out of the five justices in 1982. And if four out of the five justices can't figure it out, certainly our library staff won't. So I like the concepts that are presented in Miller and Pico, but I don't think they're distilled. We need to distill that for staff a little bit more. So my suggestion would be, let's look at the obscenity test and the harmful to minors test. And set out an age stratification on what's pervade, like patently offensive to the prevailing community standards. An adult looking at what's offensive to a child and let's bake that into the policy. And I think that would be appropriate, but I don't know if just doing Pico provides the guidance. And then if they follow it, then as long as they don't deviate from the policy, we're good. But if they make a recommendation and it fits the policy and then the board overturns it with no record. That would put us in a similar situation to what Pico was in. Because they had, they had the librarian, they had the staff, they had the superintendent, they had a public review board that had four. A committee of four members of their staff and four parents. And then the school board met and they got this list, this special list of books. And then they didn't do independent investigation and essentially just use the list to remove the books. And then the court said, okay, well, you deviated from a facially valid policy so much. We're going to start looking into the motivations of each individual board member in making that determination. And I want to stay as far away from that as we can. So that's a little bit on Pico. I'm happy to dig into it more if you need. But does that help with the understanding of what the Pico case stands for in terms of how it applies to public library?
Yes, trust us.
So, so again. That was for, Pico was for removing the books and we're not removing them from the library. I would like to just say, I, I do not want to go in a paragraph or multiple paragraphs of all these different levels of. How we're going to decide how much nudity and how much obscenity for different age groups. I absolutely don't want to get into that. The, the law, Idaho law doesn't ask for that. The Idaho law is, is purely, you know, what the definition is that we've added to the form. And if it meets that. That what I would, then it needs to get moved, but. What they're implying in that is it has to meet it as untaken as full. They're implying Miller case, which is about removing a book from the library, so I. I would like to, I mean, Pico is nine years newer than. So why are we discarding it when it's more recent? I'm just saying for relocating book, maybe just take the last. Sentence out and just say, use Miller test or Pico case. I mean, they can use Miller test all the time if they want.
Assistant director?
Um. We have a deadline that we, that is fast approaching and I'm just wondering. Underneath the request for relocation of material harmful to minors, can we keep the first sentence in the third paragraph? And get rid of the entirety of the rest of the paragraph and then bring paragraph four up underneath. That first sentence, because essentially what this sentence is saying is that we're going to make decisions based on the policy. Which is what we all need to do, but it steps back from outlining exactly how we're going to do that. And it could give us time to figure out how we're going to do that and. I also want to just say that when our staff select books. Historically and currently they are selected and they are what we call aged up. So if there is any question that an item is possibly inappropriate for a certain age group. It's talked about and then it's put in the next higher level. So there are some things that we're already doing. You know, that don't need to be written down or put in a policy, but we're already trying to do our best to follow. A law in these guidelines.
See us?
So the whole purpose of this paragraph, I don't want to mix it in with the process down below, but the purpose of it was to give the board a way out. If we get a number of books and to read, all five of us, read all the books, the whole book, page, beginning to end. We could elect to use Pico and read the parts that were pointed out that were bad. And decide, yes, it should be moved up. It's really to allow the board to, to not have to read the entire book when there's multiple books. I don't know that that's even realistic, that in thirty days, five of us are going to read. There's ten requests that come in, the five of us are going to read the entire books. So I'm just looking for a way to make it easier for the review by the board and just simply say, use it.
Um, your comments are valid because as I was working through some of these processes and the forms. I realized that what happens when the book that's submitted for review, we only have one copy and it's checked out. So do we need to, as we say, bake into the policy that we are buying copies for everyone so they can review them? Are we reviewing them based solely on what is on the internet and what trusted resources we already use? Like, we have to start thinking about the actual process. Because more than likely, we're not going to have the actual book in front of us for either staff or the board to look at. And so we need to think about that.
Certainly, I'm opposed to using more taxpayer dollars to buy potentially sweaty books. Trust us.
Well. I propose that I line out the last sentence. Here. Starting with the Pico case, the Pico ruling. Line it out and just leave the first two sentences basis. Or my suggestion, I'll put it up so we can see it.
Someone else can see it. So the inherent sentence, the Pico ruling identifies book that is pervasively vulgar, easy as space for a simple house. Or even if the vulgarity is concentrated in a single poem, single chapter or a single page, it's to be inappropriate. So you would like to remove that entire sentence. Thoughts on that, trustee Hannah?
So I couldn't find it on her. Are you still on, on paragraph three decisions?
Yes, so it's the, the last sentence in that paragraph, it starts with the Pico ruling.
Yes, would we do that or what?
Uh, yes, that's, but trust you blast or trust class, but I didn't explain it.
Yeah, so the, that third paragraph would just now read, decisions to relocate material from the CLN collection will be based on guidelines delineated in this policy. And, and that sentence is referring to Idaho law, basically. Then when considering an item relocated, the Miller test or the more recent US Supreme Court Pico case should be used. And that's the end of it.
Not as a legal case because they're not applying, apparently Pico doesn't apply to. But public libraries, but it does to schools, so we could, we want to work at it as using it as a guideline. For what is considered appropriate, even though it's a legal ruling.
So instead of saying. The end of that sentence, Pico case test shall be used, say, Pico case test may be used as a guideline. Is that what you're saying?
Suggest.
Well, first we, should we remove that last sentence?
If, if we both says it doesn't apply, then it doesn't apply, so I'd be the opposition to removing it.
Okay, trustee Buss?
It's, it's taken from sections of the decision that are confusing. So I, I didn't know the details of that, so I would just say, let's not even say it. Again, the, the Pico case was for. For public school, but it was for removing books and we're just talking about relocating. They're still going to be in the library. So I'm just trying to give freedom, but yes, I would, freedom to the board if they can't, we can't all read. You know, the full copy and, because that's what it takes for the Miller test. So. I can edit this and put. Maybe used as a guideline, is that what it is?
Okay, but first I also am finding taking out that last sentence, so we have majority consent on that. And so that last sentence, the Pico ruling, blah blah, is taken out. On that other sentence.
Just. Is he typing it now?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Okay, so what we have, that entire third paragraph has now been reduced to decisions to relocate material from the CLN collection were based on guidelines delineated in this policy. When considering if an item should be located, the Miller test or the more recent US Supreme Court Pico nineteen eighty-two case test may be used as a guideline. Uh may be used as a guideline. It's the end of that sentence.
Saying it's a legal ruling, but it's a guideline. I don't know what they uh what counsel would think, but. Would think that as a guideline, meaning that we know that. It's in my opinion that if Pico says. You can look at the book if it stinks in some pervasive fashion somewhere. The book is inappropriate. If that's what we're seeing.
All right, uh I'm good with that. So then we have majority consent. Yep, we do. Um so the end of that sentence, sorry. Ego nineteen eighty-two case test may be used as a guideline.
Right, yes.
Okay, anything else on that paragraph or should we go to the next one? Uh yes, see you, counsel.
Yes, I would ask, what is the Pico case test? What are we referring to? Why not just write that? In the paragraph there. So you know, the the because the Miller case, the court struggled with. Where's the line between unconscending adults exposure to obscenity? Because there's obscene materials case really not. You know, the Idaho statute on what constitute materials harmful to minors and they struggled with. A person who's one month over the age of eighteen and other juveniles, right? And so they anticipated this issue. And. From Miller on, the courts never abandoned. The idea that. The there's there's this concept of patent offensiveness. And then what appeals to the prurient. Uh interests in that the average person applying contemporary community standards find the work taken as a whole appeals to that prurient interest. And that's the resounding theme. So I guess my question, this is for staff sake, if they're looking at what's the Pico case test, what does that mean for them? Can we write out what the test is? Because I don't read Pico to have abandoned. The contemporary community standards test nor the prurient interest test. In fact, I would I would go so far to argue that both Miller and Pico emphasize. That the courts aren't trying to set a hard and fast rule because Congress and the states have the ability to regulate it first. And so the court was essentially saying hint, hint, nod, nod, wink, wink, state legislature, you define it. And then we'll tell you if you're wrong and if it violates the First Amendment. And our state's done just that by passing seven ten this year and the state adopted. The definition of material harmful to minors, which includes the contemporary community standards, the prurient interest tests and the redeeming values. And so I don't think, again, I don't think the library can get away from making a determination based upon. The age of the recipient of the information because they have to. Come up with somehow. What is the contemporary community standard of North Idaho or whatever the region is? And then they have to find that that work taken as a whole appeals to the prurient interest. Of that individual child or whatever, whether it's a three-year-old or seventeen-year-old. And if they don't do that, then we're already. You know. Far afield of what the process should be. And so for staff's benefit, if we could delineate what the Pico test is or what we're gonna call the test. I think it'd be very helpful to them. And I think it should. Uh mirror what the state statute. Has set forth because we have to follow state law. And if we get sued, then we point the finger at the state and say. The state gave us this discretion, we're authorizing the discretion pursuant to state law. And if you're gonna sue us, it's really the state telling us to do this. So I guess my question is, what is the Pico case test that we're instructing the staff to follow? Is there a one, two, three, or ABC? Uh is it not the same as the harmful to minors test in seven ten? Does that make sense? I wanna. Maybe I can help flesh that out too for staff so they can just read it and follow it, right?
To me, it doesn't make sense. Like, I don't know what that means.
Right.
Assistant.
So I had the other sentence in there to try to explain it, but that was uh. And criticize, maybe just the first. The first part of the sentence maybe took out. Uh you could put parentheses behind Pico test case parentheses. Identifying a book that is pervasively vulgar parentheses and just leave it at that, but. The difference is when taken as a whole, reading the entire book. Is is. I'm trying to give the board a way out so we don't have to all five of us read the entire book and then say taken as a whole. If there's a way to. Identify if a book is pervasively vulgar. And then that's a way for us to do it too. But that's all I'm trying to do. If we want, if we need to add that back in. Pervasively vulgar, I you know, I wanted to do that, of course.
Assistant Director.
Um. The trustee has asked, you know, for a way out for the board to not read the whole book. And in a sense, for you to consider the staff as having that ability as well, staff only have ten days. And the board has longer than staff to read these items um. We cannot read. All of those materials, especially if they're checked out and especially if they are. Uh. You know, not accessible to us. So to me, like. I understand that this paragraph is to give the board a way out, but can we create a policy that says? That we aren't going to read it in its entirety or is that completely illegal? Like, can we say we are going to look at, you know, these like three sources and make a joint decision? And that's gonna be how we review each of these things. Because I think we're gonna be set up to fail if we're expected to read all of them.
Assistant.
I I am meaning for this paragraph to be a way out for the. For the staff also, I didn't say in the board, but um. If the staff decides. It shouldn't be moved and is trying to be. Pausious to not do anything they shouldn't do or something, but although. If you don't move it, you can. Not be doing something you should do also, but if. If the staff decides to not move it, then the board gets involved. Um. I don't think we. That can say. That we don't have to read the whole book because that's flying in the face of. You know, of the of the uh state law that says it actually says when taken as. But that was for defining seen material. We're just trying to decide whether to move it or not. So I'm just. I don't think we want to come out and say you don't have to read the whole book or you need to go based on. Three online reviews or something like. Just give ourselves the flexibility. Same, you can either do the Miller test, which implies taken as a whole, or the Pico test, which is. For a step, book is pervasively vulgar. None of it's exact, but but that's all. If if we need more for people case, I'm willing to add a few of those words back in.
Okay, I'm doing for now.
Uh trustee Hannah.
Okay, I'm just going on that same sentence. The Pico ruling identifies uh if a book contains portions which are pervasively vulgar. Maybe we use that as our guideline, uh just suggesting that. Uh I know that I think counsel keeps referring to community standards. Well. At least the last two candidates that ran and are presently on on the board, that's trustee class and myself. Ran unquestionably on a platform and said we were gonna remove folks that were appropriate or I forget what exact terminology was in our campaign. And it was a an election. And we were voted into office. Is that a reasonable measurement of what the community standard is?
The question, trustee pass.
Can you repeat your wording, the test case, which?
Let me see, the Tico ruling identifies a book. I I'm just saying if it contains portions which are pervasively vulgar. Who was gonna give example of the skunk in the crawl space? And and again, we're I if I understood. I know where we're going. We're attempting to say we don't want to look at the book as a whole and we're and then. We're we're not wanting to apply a community standard. And we're saying that even if there's. Portions of it, they're pervasively vulgar, that's unacceptable to the community because the community hired us to get rid of that stuff. Meaning to an election. So I don't know if they can interpret community standard by. What the voters voted for and the voters elected people that were gonna win their, I mean, move folks that were um. You know, the way we had in our platforms there. So I don't think that's, I don't know if that's twisting things too far. But I feel there was a message out there given by. The voters who put us in there as representatives of the community.
I agree, but I'm not the expert on all that.
Yeah, well.
Uh trustee pass.
But this is what I put in there. In that last sentence, uh where it says US Supreme Court Pico nineteen eighty-two test case. Which contains portions which may be pervasively vulgar, comma, may be used as a guideline. So the whole sentence is when considering if an item should be relocated, the Miller test or the more recent US Supreme. Or Pico nineteen eighty-two test case. Uh. Maybe I read right, which contains portions.
So if a material contains portions. That you're trying to consider.
Maybe maybe it shouldn't say. Base test, it should say. Considering an item, the Miller test or the people test. See them.
But keep it consistent maybe instead of item, I should say material.
The present item at the beginning. So. This is this is what I have, what I've put in there. When considering if an item should be relocated. The Miller test or the more recent. US Supreme Court Pico nineteen eighty-two case test. Item that contains portions which may be pervasively vulgar, maybe used as a guideline.
That doesn't quite make sense to me. I'm thinking. Uh we could put a. Good parentheses in there before the orange section. Uh. And then take out the word for. Or maybe for and just items that contain. Which may be, which may be pervasive vulgar, maybe used as guideline. Oh, so and and the uh. Was that contain portions which may be very pervasive vulgar. Okay, so for trustee hand these. And benefit, I will read the whole sentence. Uh well, we're already the whole paragraph. Decisions to relocate material from the CLN collection will be based on guidelines delineated in this policy. When considering if an item should be relocated, comma, the Miller test or the more recent US Supreme Court Pico nineteen eighty-two case test. And then parentheses, it says items that can contains. You should say contain. Portions which may be pervasively vulgar in parentheses may be used as a guideline. Uh yeah, that sense me uh response. Okay, so we have.
Yeah, I like it now.
Uh we have a new majority consensus. Work at paragraph.
So. Unfortunately, it still doesn't help staff define pervasively vulgar, but. It's a loose referring to what. And it's portions.
Yeah, I I think it would be easier to figure out if this portion is pervasively vulgar instead of trying to get the whole. All of it is pervasively vulgar.
I mean. There is no true Pico case test, so I do have trouble with that. Um. I understand wanting to put in the statement of portion of the book, the items um. You don't know, like, I don't know what else.
Thank you, Ken.
Uh yes, go ahead, trustee Hannah.
Every science, this in my opinion is not an exacting thing. And oftentimes I hear the word the spirit of the law. Well, I want to apply the spirit of the policy. And so you can't remember it down to the very word in my opinion. So I think that's just in my opinion, using more portions as close as we can get. And we know what the spirit of the policy is here. I believe staff will know and understand that. And um. We're never gonna reach an exacting uh number of bad words, bad sentences, bad paragraphs or chapters. So. I'm just guessing that's as close as we can come. I'm not saying this is the end all answer here, but. That's as close as I can possibly put a measurement on it. And um again, we need to apply or staff needs to apply. And then if it goes to the board. The spirit of the policy and the spirit is we don't want inappropriate material going to minors. And I think that that's a community goal, a community objective. And I think that that's we're attempting to fulfill in in our duty and our positions. So. That's I I don't think we're, I I don't think staff is gonna get an exacting. It's not, it's not mathematics. We can't say, well, it can't exceed, you know, forty-nine percent or fifty-one percent. So. Just my guess is. As a board, I I can't, I can't in any more exacting fashion tell you how much is acceptable and how much is not.
Assistant.
So the very first sentence, I think. Makes it pretty clear. We're trying to follow. What's delineated in the policy, which you shouldn't have to repeat all of that all over again. So it's the Idaho law, it's. The uh. Definitions and things um. I think by saying Pico case, you give some validity. To why we're saying portions that may be vulgar. If we don't say Pico case and we just say. Uh follow the Miller case except for portions, other portions that may be vulgar. I don't think that's very good. Um. I don't know if we're gonna get sued because we are trying to relocate a book. We don't take it as a whole, but there's never been a court case that my know, to my knowledge, about relocating a book. And making decision that uh maybe will be the first, but uh. Say, let's, you know, give give us some flexibility on this. And uh staff is already saying that. You're moving it up one age group. So, you know, are you in trouble because you you moved it up when you shouldn't have or something? So I. I I think the risk is low and it's just giving us the freedom and it's giving us a. Substanti- substantiation of why we're making the decision because the Supreme Court did say that.
Ultimately, the book, even if it lands in the adult access only, is ultimately available to the minor if an adult feels so strongly or their guardian rather. Or parent feels so strongly they should have it. Well, it is available. I don't personally care if it stigmatizes a child that can't access the book. Tough, too bad. There's the book, it's available, it's been looked at and it's been decided it goes in a certain area and. Again, I'm not, I'm not trying to thwart the law and and thumb a nose at it, but um we're making a reasonable attempt and we're not gonna be overkill, puritan, tentacle. Or we take one bad word out and move the book into a different section, at at least my 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 opinion. Sorry, I went off on a little opinionated rant there.
Yeah, I would imagine that would happen. Um okay, so are we good with this for now? We'll move on. We'll come back to it at some point, rather.
Uh comment, sure.
Okay.
There's, there are court cases related to relocation of books. They don't always use those terms, but. Off the top of my head, a one that sticks out is color coding books. The court overturned that. They said that caused a. Uh undue stigmatism which violated the First Amendment of a minor child. And also the courts, federal courts have roundly rejected rating systems like the MPAA. That's why libraries can't. Rate PG thirteen and R because it's inherently. Rate PG thirteen and R because it's inherently content-based discrimination. And so relocation. Is going to be removal. In terms of a federal court's analysis, because it's removing it from. The person who had access to it before. And so the courts are going to follow the same framework they did on the color coding and the rating system cases. So I just want to be clear on that. Happy to pull all those cases for you guys. If you'd like, I'll pull the whole thing, send them out an email to the board if you'd like on that. Okay, yeah. I'll make a note of that.
All right, uh, so on to the. Oh, yes. Okay, so moving on to the fourth paragraph, it starts to have a CLN decision, disposition. Uh, so on that first line, RR MF would need to be replaced with form. Uh, do you have consent on that? Okay, and plus.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the three of us. We're reading, changing our, in my to form. Okay, and the next thing, uh, whether made by staff and then crossed out. Suggestions to really relocate or move the item. Actually, so everything that's crossed out in that. Latest version, so to relocate or remove the item. Word review. Uh, next, RR MF. And on the next line of the CLN decision. If the RR MF submitter is not satisfied with the decision, actually, so the rest. Rests on that page. Do we have majority agreement to take out all those sections that are crossed out?
Well, let me read it myself now again. I see the line out, so let me just read it without the. Data that's under the, I'm sorry, the CLN decisions.
All right, go ahead and read it out, I guess.
Okay, I'm reading the CLN decision on the disposition of the submitted form. Whether made by staff or by the board shall be implemented by CLN staff. And I assume the form submitter, I don't know. Identify, notify the decision within five business days. And that's what I'm reading on that page.
So move all the stuff that's been crossed out. Okay, uh, just plus.
One thing is, uh, that last form. With the, the form submitter. But shall be notified. The farm, we implement CLN staff and the form submitter. Okay, that's fine. Yeah. Notified of the decision within five business days. I'm good with all that. No.
Okay, so we have majority consent to remove, uh, just on page two. And it's saying that, and replacing that. In the form.
Yes.
Then moving on to page three. We have majority consent to remove all the, the words that have been struck out. And so the rest of that paragraph would just be, the board's decision is final. An item is eligible for reconsideration only once in a three-year period unless the board determines sufficient new compelling evidence.
Should anywhere, I forgot where that was. Oh, there it is. Okay, it was back in paragraph two. Yes, I'm good so far. When it was spread.
Okay, uh, assistant director.
Um, I don't know if on the, next to the last line of that paragraph. If you want to say an item is eligible for reconsideration or relocation.
Oh.
Then, then the relocation.
Uh, it is under the, the heading, last for relocation of minors.
Be relocated.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so then. I've agreed. Uh, the board's decision is final, the item is eligible for relocation only once in a three-year period unless we're term sufficient new evidence introduced. Uh, I am good with that, uh, trust of hearts.
Second, um. We're doing several things all at once here.
Uh, yes, we're taking out all good. Words that have been struck through. And all that is remaining.
Yeah, I'm good with removing that full group of sentences at the beginning.
And changing reconsideration to relocation.
So the board's decision is final and item is eligible. Relocation. Now, what? Always meant there is to be reconsidered. Not reconsideration, like moving out, uh, or reconsideration of location, maybe. Is a, uh. I think it needs both words, relocation, reconsideration, or relocation, reevaluation, or reevaluating.
Reevaluation of relocation.
Yeah.
Because consideration in other paragraph.
Okay, uh, business manager.
May I suggest? An item is eligible to be reconsidered or relocation. Only once in a three-year period unless the board determines sufficiently compelling evidence is introduced.
I mean, reconsideration.
Okay, so the only thing that, that you changed in your suggestion was just to say. Reconsidered for relocation or certain.
Eligible. To be reconsidered relocation.
Remove the four after eligible.
I got it correctly there. I agree with what I thought I heard. An item is eligible for a to be relook, reconsidered for relocation only once in a twelve-year, in a, in a three-year period. See, I got that right. An item eligible to be considered for relocation only once in a three-year period, blah, blah, blah.
Re reconsidered or. Be reconsidered instead of considered.
Yeah, because it would have already been considered one time. So, uh, yeah, um, okay, so I'll read it from. From the string. An item is eligible to be reconsidered for relocation. Only once in a three-year period unless board determines sufficiently compelling evidence is introduced. So. Okay, and. Okay, I mean, yes, so that's three evidence, eight. And. Nearly. All right, so. Uh, okay, so the whole document is. Open, I did have, oh wait, we do need to go back, um, and approve.
Uh, it's the other paragraph we skipped over.
Yeah, so on page two, the, the request for reconsideration of material. Paragraph that's all in orange or brown, depending on how your vision interprets that.
That's just a few minutes to read it, hardly.
Okay. Trust us.
That, that paragraph is lifted directly out of the existing policy that's in force right now.
Yeah, and I think that's, I never agreed, that's what we were thinking, um. You can finish reaching to the paragraph. Okay, so trustee handling, let us know when you're done reading it.
You okay with it? Yes.
Okay, so the only change that I had was in that, uh, the second line. Says make a lot of citizens' request for reconsideration. That's we're just calling it a request for reconsideration. Guess we should take out the word citizens. Uh, yes, I agree on that last one.
Yes, citizens in there. I didn't know very much about a rule with the old, just to minimize changes, but I'm fine with that.
Okay, so plus, Hanley and Onsong are already taking out citizen, the word citizens. Uh, any other changes or is it good as it is? Assistant director.
Um, for consistency sake, on the third sentence, can we say library director instead of district director?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it. I'm good with that. So that was three yeses and majority consent on that, unanimous, actually.
Good room.
Are you calling it? Sorry, it was a yes.
Uh, yeah, I, I thought that way. We have a unanimous consent on that. Thanks, trustee plus.
Is, is there anything that, do we have total freedom to do this in thirty days or do we have to do? We're not governed by this at all, the Idaho law, sixty days. This seems like the Idaho law. Is, I did, I didn't really read it this time today when I read it, but I thought I saw before that. It could be used to remove or relocate. If the Idaho law is only for relocate, then it seems like it doesn't cover this reconsideration.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it applies to that.
Whether the sixty days would cover this somehow, but definitely.
Hey, um, so I had, I think, I'm, I'm. I like the idea, but I'm not sure that we really have time to deal with it. Um. So I just, I'm looking for your guys' opinions. On page one. Under the materials harmful to minors.
And that we're done with this.
Uh, oh, yes, I can think of something more. Any change then? We'll start now.
You possibly like break that into like a couple paragraphs, like a big chunk of text. I didn't look at that before. I'm just like, it's a lot, but if you don't.
Uh, to see a logical place for breaking it into two. The assistant director is talking about the paragraph that we just turned from orange. Okay, um, what was it? Um, business manager.
I was actually thinking the sentence that starts, the community library network is a member of. The cooperative information network is kind of a separate plot than that first part of the paragraph. And that would be a logical place to have a second paragraph. And then you can leave where, uh, trustee plus had broken it as a third paragraph.
Okay, uh, so trustee Hanley, uh, not. Uh, not changing any of the wording, just making it into three paragraphs. So the first paragraph would be the first two sentences. Yep, exactly. Uh, so the next paragraph would be the community library network and it. Also has two sentences, so ends with own materials. Yep, and then the rest of it would be. Yep.
I mean, different, like, next thing, that's good.
So the third paragraph is all about the process. I think that's good. Second paragraph is just explaining. Why we're not doing CIN books.
Okay, um, so then we're done with that section. Okay, so that. Yeah, so the thing I had was on page one, under materials harmful to minors. Um, it was just to add. A bullet point, uh, says something to the effect, upon receipt of proof. Official court determination in parentheses. That any material in CLN's juvenile, teen, or young adult collections has been determined by a court in the US to be harmful to minors. It shall be proactively moved to the adult access only section. And yes, is that going to be, do you think?
We're, we're talking, I both.
Okay, so under the materials harmful to minors. Being.
Right there, the bullet.
Yeah, so adding another bullet under that.
I don't know why we have a bullet, but it's just one thing.
You can have two. Okay, so on page one.
Yes.
Under, so about halfway down the page, the materials harmful to minors, there's one bullet point there. I'm proposing to add a second bullet point. Because I feel that's worth the time right now. Um, okay, so upon received proof. Uh, in, in parentheses, official court determination. And, and parentheses. Uh, that any material in. CLN's. Juvenile. Teen. I, Ellie. Me and. I, Ellie. Uh, I'm sure it'd be the all. Juvenile teen or young adult collections. Has been determined by. A court in the US. To be harmful to minors. It shall be proactively. Moved to the adults. Same small section.
Just adult sec.
Uh, this is.
There is no section of the document.
Okay, business manager.
It just seems redundant to have in parentheses a visit, uh, official court determination. And then have determined by a court in the US. It would make more sense if you're going to add that to have upon receipt of proof, parentheses, official. It would make more sense if you're going to add that to have upon receipt of proof parentheses official court determination. That any material in CLN's juvenile teen at young or young adult collections. Has been determined to be harmful to minors, it shall be proactively moved to the adult access only section. You're, you're asking for proof.
Yeah.
Which is the court determination, but then you're saying it again. It just seems redundant.
Um, yeah, but it would need to be. Court in the United States because you know, you wouldn't want something coming in from.
Well, an additional US.
Yeah, but does that? Um, include.
That's.
Or like a county court or something, or it would have to be. I don't want to be limited to only like federal courts.
It doesn't say federal courts, the US.
Okay, so with that.
Within the United States, within the United States.
So, so.
Uh, legal counsel, is that your understanding of it?
Well. We initially bifurcate courts into federal and state courts and serve separate systems under our dual system of dual federalism and. Lower courts are wrong all the time. So, I mean, I guess it's reasonable to rely on a district court opinion, but the appeal could be. Something that overturns that opinion. And so you have the. The court got determination, but then it gets overturned so that there would be an additional process that could. Fall outside of this policy. And then the other concept here is. The all access card. So if a minor just has a library card, they have access to adults in the, uh, the. It's kind of weird to call it the adult section, just the library. And the library is not an adult access only section. And so reading the statute, it's something new. We're having to create in the library with only. Adult access. And so it's not the juvenile, the teen, the young adult or the library. It's something else. And the statute anticipates that in the whole library, if a minor has been given access to something that's harmful to minors. Then that has to be removed to the adult access section as well. So. I don't think it's just juvenile teen or young adult collection. I think it's just. Harmful to minors anywhere has to go into that section. That's the way I'm reading the statute.
So, so that any material.
Yeah, it just says from a school or public library, right? So they just have to obtain it from the library. It doesn't matter what section it's in.
Okay, so is this going to be too problematic to deal with right now because. If the legislature fine tunes definitions, things to be doing this again and we could maybe add something.
I, I, I think you should leave the juvenile teen, young adult, because that's the sections that we care about. If it's in those sections, we have to move it. I mean, that's what this whole policy has been about. Of all the library. We know that we've got a book that was found by work to have this problem. And it's in these three sections. We need to move it. But I, that's appropriate. I mean, if, if, if now we're worrying about the entire library, we got to go back and change things in this policy. Because we've got it written all over the place about juvenile teen and young adult. I think.
Yeah. Okay, so.
What's the rest of?
So. And so the official US court determination would not be crossed out, but the. Second line says. Has been determined by a court in the US.
Well, we got to say. Or be harmful.
All right, yes, has been determined to be harmful to minors. So just take out by a court in the US.
Well, you don't want to put it two places.
Are, are we not keeping the one on top line there?
I think it's redundant, but the one on the bottom is explaining how they're harmful to minors. You got determined two places.
Okay, so you want to take out the first one and leave the second one?
That's what I'm.
Okay, so, all right, so we're considering upon receipt of proof that any material in CLN's juvenile teen or young adult collection. Has been determined by a court in the US to be harmful to minors, it shall be proactively moved to the adult access only. Section. Where.
It needs to.
Uh, move to the adult access only section. Adult would probably not be capitalized. I think.
Well, we applies the names of the sections, but, uh, maybe we should.
Yes.
Did that in the first paragraph?
In the first paragraph.
Oh.
JT and YA is all lowercase.
That's right. Is there more to it that you have?
No, I don't think so. Um. Okay, so I'll just read that one more time. Upon receipt of proof that any material in CLN's juvenile teen or young adult collection. Has been determined by a court in the US to be harmful to minors, it shall be proactively moved to the adult access only section. You guys find that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, I guess so that's change, make that change. Assistant Director?
I just, I guess I'm asking like, none of our libraries have adult access only collections. And in our little libraries, we don't have, um, space to make that. So. I guess what I'm wondering is what is the board's expectation, um, for the libraries having these areas? Cause I know that some Idaho libraries, because they're so small, aren't permitting children in the libraries. At all unless they have an adult with them because they can't create that adult access only collection.
Um, well, hopefully. We don't have that many books that violate the law and so. Let's see, we're going to have to operational, but I mean, they could have. Like a locker or.
Do you not think we have any?
All right.
Suggestion. If a library, not, not part of the policy, but if a library, for example, Spirit Lake or Harrison is too small. To accommodate a adult access only area, then books that are found to be written for minors and so forth. That go to that kind of department, meaning to eat that's all access only area. Maybe it could be located to a larger library that can handle that material. And then the other libraries can always have it sent down to them if it's requested.
Yep, that's not a good suggestion. I completely don't.
I have two, two items for this section. One is the first sentence goes part of the way, but not all the way according to the statute. The statute requires that if material is harmful to minors, it shall be moved to an area with adult access only. It doesn't care what section the library currently is in. The second thing is that the statute doesn't allow the library to wait for court proof. The statute requires the library to take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to material harmful to minors. And so I think this policy as it's written right now facially doesn't comply with the statute. And so instead of saying, we're only removing it from juvenile teen and young adult, that's part of what we're doing, but we're removing it. And placing it in an adult access only section, right? That policy leaves open the ability to place it in the general circulation of the library. And still removing it from juvenile teen, young adult section. Uh, so those would be my two issues, I think. With how this is drafted. Um, if it's materials harmful to minors, this new statute says. Library has to take reasonable steps to restrict access and it has to be relocated to an adult access only section.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to make it perfectly clear that, um, because it. Like we had some pushback previously that this was not the staff's job, that it was the public's job. And I just wanted to make it clear that yes, we do want the staff to be involved in doing this proactively.
Yeah, that's one of the basis for liability under eighteen fifteen seventeen B three A. We gave or made available or we failed to take reasonable steps.
Yeah, trustee pass.
So we have not used that phrase or that, uh, I've needed adult access only anyplace else in the policy. We need to go back and put that in. I guess that's coming from the, the new law, but. What we haven't used that other places. Is, is that really? What we want to say in the policy to be compliant, adult access only? Because they need that. Down here. We just said move to the adult collection. But I, I don't, adult access only has never been used.
Okay, I think I picked that from. When the staff said that, it stuck in my head.
Is that the correct phrase, adult access only from the law?
Yes, uh, an area with adult access only. Or they also say take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to materials harmful to minors. And so probably one of liability is that we gave or made available material harmful to minors. Or we failed to take reasonable steps to restrict access.
Okay, so the, the second bullet point that I suggested is. Not necessary because it's covered under the first bullet point that staff should be doing that proactively.
Well, we have to take reasonable steps to restrict the access. And I don't think that waiting for a court determination. Would. Satisfy that requirement in all situations. Certainly it is. Imminently reasonable for staff to be handed a court case. They call me, I look it up, it's totally valid. Here it is. This is the book, whatever. And then they use that and they move the book. Totally reasonable. But I don't think it's reasonable to wait and require a court to find something harmful to minors. Because that does violence to or ignores the reasonable steps requirement that the new statute has. So we, we need to do that plus.
That's boss.
Well, I don't take that first sentence as contradictory. That's just a general statement about this policy. The policy is allowing the location form to be used. It's also down here, uh. Basically telling staff that if, if material is harmful to minors, it needs to be put in adult access. So we're saying that, I don't think we're saying to wait until a court. So the, that's just a general. Prelude to the, to the policy, I think that this is what it's doing.
Okay, so I'm looking at it as the, the first one that says materials that violate the codes shall be moved to the adult access link section is saying, okay, staff. This is your job. And the second one is saying, okay, if you missed it. Uh, it doesn't have to go through the entire 60 day process. It can just be more immediately.
Yes, but.
Guys, it doesn't need to be reconsidered. It just gets pulled by staff because some court somewhere decided it's not appropriate.
Right. That's what I was thinking.
But it's the library, not the young adult juvenile teen section. It's anywhere in the library. So the policy states that if it's in the juvenile teen or young adult collection, then we're going to move it to adults only access. But what about in the rest of the library? And then. And then drafting a sentence that says, we're going to be proactive upon the receipt of a court case. Imploys that we're not going to be proactive unless we receive a court case, right? And so we, we're going to be choosing the words we're using. And so we shouldn't say upon receipt of proof. Because that's placing all the, uh. All the efforts on someone else, on someone not CLN. So CLN has to receive the proof that somebody else provides and then, then we'll be proactive, right? So I think the statute says we have to have reasonable steps. So that doesn't require proof. And it requires us to be proactive regardless of receipt of proof, regardless of a court case. We have to make our own determination if the material is obscene or if the material is harmful to minors according to Idaho state law. Or other federal court law. And it doesn't just apply to under 18 collections, right?
Okay, so the first sentence could read and she was violate Idaho codes eighteen fifteen thirteen, eighteen fifteen fourteen, eighteen fifteen fifteen. Shall be removed. To the adult access only session. That'd be moved. Or shall be, how about proactive being moved? It makes it crystal clear.
Staff shall take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to material harmful to minors. You know.
Who's judging their co-activity? Like, is it your version of proactive or is that like mine? Like, we got it a few days. You know what I mean?
The court will, the court and it, and proactive is not the test, just like pervasive vulgarity is not the test. Proactive is not the test. The test is reasonable steps. And so the court's going to look at all the other libraries and they're going to ask librarians. What they're doing to restrict access. They're going to have an expert witness. The expert witness is going to testify. And they're going to say, here's what we would do. Here's what I recommend. This is what an Idaho library should do. And then the other side will have their expert witness and then the court or the jury will have to determine, is it reasonable or not? So this is an objective standard that the court will determine based upon what's the reasonable librarian? What's the reasonable librarian? So they don't care what you think. They don't care how you feel and they certainly don't care if it's proactive or not. They're going to wonder, what's your duty of care here under the statute? And is the steps you take to restrict access to minors to material harmful to minors reasonable? And if your policy states that you're only looking at the juvenile teen and young adult section, that's on its face unreasonable.
So should we just, uh. Make a reasonable paraphrase of the law that says the library shall take reasonable steps to remove. Materials that violate Idaho codes eighteen fifteen thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, uh, to the adult access only section?
Yeah, I think that's helpful and maybe say, and get staff input on. Are they going to go peruse it? Do they review it? Like, give some guidance on what do we think is reasonable? And then it's something that staff could accommodate. Certainly, we've dealt with this on, on reviewing the books when we get a complaint, right? How do we, how do we review the entire book in context and make a determination if there's any redeeming factors, right? And so. What a staff think would be reasonable steps to restrict us access to minors. Um, and then get some bullet points. We could put that in there and then the court could say we're wrong if they want. But at least we're grappling with the issue and saying. Perusing every book, every X number of days or, um. You know, I let staff do that part, but we have to take some step in. Restricting access to minors for that material. And I think that the complaint process is part of that, but not the entire part. And I think it has to do with reading. I think it has to do with institutionalized knowledge of the, of the librarians that are here. I think staff could say, does anyone aware of any of this material? That certainly would be a potential to be a step that would be reasonable. Having staff drop everything they're doing right now and read through every single book independently would be unreasonable likely. And so kind of go into the middle of that and put some bullet points. I think that would suffice.
Okay, um, so then it should read, uh, the library shall take reasonable steps. That would be the beginning of the sentence. Um, and so you can move the materials violate Idaho codes to after.
Yeah, that's right. Oh, library.
Um. The library shall take reasonable steps. Remove. Remove. Or should it just be? Move and then materials be decapitalized.
I would suggest it's in place of move that we use the statutory term, which is restrict access to minors. Restrict access by minors to material harmful to minors. Cause we don't necessarily need to move it. Right? Once a book's there, we don't need to move it again. And we certainly can't leave the lock open on purpose, wink wink, nod nod, right? That's not reasonable steps to restrict access.
Okay, so then. So we would.
After access you insert by minors. Now by minors two. And then we don't want to leave out eighteen fifteen seventeen B because that will be the new statute.
Uh so. Isn't wouldn't that be included in eighteen dash fifteen fifteen? No? Uh okay, so maybe we can put uh in there entirety.
Well, it's a new section that says notwithstanding any other provision of law. And it provides a new definition of promote in um eighteen fifteen fourteen and promote. It's quite broad. Manufacture issue sell give provide deliver publish distribute circulate disseminate. Present exhibit or advertise or offer agree to do the same.
Okay, so but could be put in parentheses after eighteen fifteen fifteen could be put in their entirety. With that, so that would include all portions of eighteen fifteen thirteen and fourteen and fifteen.
That exposed seventeen then? Fifteen seventeen B? You not stated?
Oh, it wasn't sent. I'm sorry. I thought it was eighteen. Okay. So after eighteen fifteen fifteen, it should say and eighteen fifteen seventeen B. Interesting.
Well, ma- materials harmful to minors is a defined term. And so it's implied, but I certainly think that's helpful to have it in the policy so people know where to look. I Idaho law, the legislature has essentially focused on what they're calling obscene materials. And materials harmful to minors. And those those are the materials that are not protected. But first amendment, so they're carved out. So we can't engage in viewpoint and content based discrimination for those items.
Okay, so then should we just remove the entire rest of the sentence after eighteen fifteen seventeen B? So do we need to put on to the adult access only section or is that already covered by the restrict access minors?
You're asking me, I'll just state again that I'm a big fan of statutory language and it's no reason to re wa- reinvent the wheel.
Okay, so keep the to the adult access only section in there since it's already in the statutes?
Well, we can't give or make available material harmful to minors. We have to take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to that material.
Could everybody think they have so far? I think.
And do you want me to read it or uh from the screen?
I thought it was the library shall take recent all steps to which to restrict access by minors. To materials that violate Idaho codes eighteen blank through eighteen fifteen seventeen B period and the story. That's where we are. That's where I'm that's where I think I'm hearing.
And then the other part is we the the library shall not give or make available material harmful to minors. It's the other part of prong A.
So do you think that should be in the policy?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Or incorporate it by reference. Because we can restrict access, but then oh, someone could go give the material to someone.
So is there a second bullet?
Um, do you suggest that just be? After eighteen fifteen seventeen B period and then what you just said? Or?
The statute says the institution cannot give or make available material harmful to minors. And they must take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to material harmful to minors. So in any iteration of that, it's fine with me.
Thank you. My question, boss.
What I had done post channel is I added after fifteen seventeen B comma. By moving them to the adult access only section. This is how we're we're restricting. But I guess it could be a completely new sentence, but. I I think we want to say in there, don't we, that we. Going to move them to the adult access only section.
And the the statute would prohibit the library from giving. The material to a minor regardless of if it's in the adult access section or not. And so reasonable steps is one part of the test. So wherever it is in the library, we have to take reasonable steps to move it. And then wherever it is in the library, we can't give it to the minor. So. The policy saying we'll take reasonable steps to move it. Has one part of prong A and there's two parts. Don't give or make available and take reasonable steps to restrict access.
If you want that for the law there or?
The library shall not give or make available material harmful to minors. Sentence one. Then the library shall take reasonable steps to restrict us by minors to materials that violate Idaho codes by moving them.
You're adding. You're adding a new sentence instead of changing the end.
Sure. Whatever reads well encompasses those two. Uh concepts, but.
So so what I was going to say was you're gonna take reasonable steps by moving them to the adult access only section and. Preventing. Minors from accessing them. That that's in addition to moving it to the adult only.
Well. Moving them can be one reasonable step to restrict access, but it certainly doesn't encompass. All of what could constitute. A reasonable step. And certainly if it's the only one we do, probably isn't reasonable. And so we have an adult only access section. Then how is that section monitored? How is it restricted? Um is it labeled? Is it locked? Is it a separate area of the library? Is it high? Is it low? Is it? Behind? Is it in the office? Is it? Because remember that even displaying one of these. In a glass case where no one can get would still violate the statute because it would be it would fall under one of the definitions of exhibiting it. So. The concept of moving it. You have to be proactive in moving it to the adult access section by taking reasonable steps. But that's not the end of the test because then we can't give it to a minor as well. Just because it's moved doesn't mean it's not given or made available. So we could have a a kids' library card now that we change and say, okay, well, adult access, we're going to give to the kids. That'd be making it available even though it's in the section.
Is that sufficient, the last part? And preventing minors from accessing.
You could start, you want us to keep the uh. By moving them to the adult access only section? And then and then and then we could say.
I guess the statutory language would be my recommendation plus bullet points. If I was drafting it, I would say. CLN shall not give or make available material harmful to minors. CLN shall take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to material harmful to minors. Material harmful to minors is defined in fifteen thirteen fifteen fourteen fifteen 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 seventeen B. And then I would say some of the reasonable steps that staff may employ are. Including but not limited to the following. And then I would let staff come up with what do we think reasonable steps are? And then any other step staff thinks is reasonable, right? So give a couple of bullet points under that of things the library is going to be doing to be taking reasonable steps. And I would leave it at that.
Yeah, I follow you. CLN shall not.
Uh yeah, shall not give or make available material harmful to minors. And that's statutory language verbatim, except it's not in passive voice. It's an active voice.
But shall not give or make available material.
Harmful to minors, yeah. Period. And then the library or CLN, you know, that's fine. Shall take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to material harmful to minors. Maybe that's as defined in instead of that violates. Yeah, because those sections have definitions within definitions and and stuff and it's. Not necessarily a violation if one of the bullet points applies because nudity could be defined as nudity, but not as obscene. Or nudity could be defined as nudity, but not harmful to minors. And so there's always the harmful to minors concept attached to whatever we're uh. Analyzing.
Is that right there? But I like the. That that meet the definitions.
As defined in Idaho codes.
Yeah. I would just say as defined and it's it's easier.
Because then.
And you do bullet points?
I would I would ax the rest of that after capital letter B. And I would say um. Material harmful to minors. Shall be relocated to an area with adult access only.
Yes, I understand. Shall be.
Relocated. To an area. With adult access only. And and I don't know what staff thinks about this, but maybe put or. Any other appropriate disposition staff because I don't necessarily want to restrict staff. To not just get rid of a book, to relocate it, to whatever staff kind of deems is appropriate at that point. Because if we have a small library and one of these books ends up in any part of the library and staff has to do something with it. Then, you know, the delivery doesn't have an adult access only section. They're going to create that for one book and is that stigmatizing or in and of itself? So I would leave a little catchall for the for the staff to say. Materials harmful to minors shall be relocated to an area with adult access only. And then we might want to spend some time crafting this language, but have a a safety valve there for staff that doesn't just require that.
You want this to be the first of two bullet points?
No, the bullet point should be the reasonable steps if we're going to include those. I think we're as determined by staff as a great start.
I don't. I don't know that we need to put our reasonable steps in here. I think I would, we would have them more in our procedures.
Yeah.
Scene. And then that would be discoverable if there was a case that we would need to be talking about. That's my preference.
Okay, so after the last sentence in the first paragraph, materials harmful to minors shall be relocated to an area of adult. Uh with adult access only or as determined by staff. Should be put uh semi colon and shall not be promoted. Use the the wording from the. Statutes um. Shall not, shall not promote, give or make available.
I like that. We go in the first one, shall not promote, give or make available. Okay, yeah.
This is one of the interesting intricacies of the statute and I try not to criticize and stay positive when I describe things. But you'll you'll notice that under eighteen fifteen seventeen B two. It says that we can't promote, give or make available to a minor A, B and C. But when you go to down to three, it says three A, it says we gave or made available to. And so. They're not including promote in that section, but then if you go back up to how promote is defined in. Eighteen fifteen fourteen promote includes give. And so. It's weird, but it 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 would be considered promotion, but they don't include the term that has. All of the other terms in it and give isn't otherwise defined. And so. Give and make available are what we're worried about for liability purposes, but we're also prohibited from promoting under that first section.
Okay, so just use the word promote. So CLN shall not promote.
I would I would include promote in there as well. It's fine. Yeah, yeah.
Then how do we word that without being? Uh, okay, so it's could say CLN shall not promote, give or make available material harmful to minors to those under eighteen? Instead of saying to minors to minors?
It's.
Okay, well, I just said, because to me that says that the materials harmful to minors don't.
The statute says to a minor.
So it's a to a minor would be.
Yeah. Or to any minor. But it it's whatever the board from would would like. Any minor, two A minor, yeah.
Okay, so if we have all that in the first paragraph, then we don't need that other suggestion of the court. Jesus.
I think that's still good.
Or, okay, um. Okay, all right, so. See if we have agreement on the first paragraph. It currently reads CLN shall not promote, give or make available material harmful to minors to any minor. The library shall take reasonable steps to restrict access by minors to materials as defined in Idaho codes eighteen fifteen thirteen, eighteen fifteen fourteen. Eighteen fifteen fifteen and eighteen fifteen seventeen B. Materials harmful to minors shall be relocated to an area with adult access only or as determined by staff. So is that crafty enough? Shall we see if we have? Uh, okay, so we have majority consent on that?
Yes, sure.
Okay, I'm a yes.
You know.
And trespass is a yes. Okay, so we now have consent on that.
So we don't need the next. We don't need anything about reasonable steps. I mean, that's where this is coming from.
Yeah, that was just the remnant of that.
It doesn't say reasonable steps anyplace anymore.
Okay, and then. The second paragraph in the materials harmful to minors section would read on receipt of proofs that any material in CLN. We're going to change that. Uh take out the juvenile teen or young adult. Okay, so. That one would read on receipt of proofs. That one would read, on receipt of proofs that any material in. The CLN collection has been determined by a court in the US to be harmful to minors, it shall be proactively moved to the adult.
Counsel doesn't see that as the only reason to move it. I feel like it's an extra emphasis. I like the uh. The amendments to the constitution, they're just emphasizing. Things, they're not calling up new things.
So should we put in addition before that? So it was reading in addition.
Rick told that there was a robust debate about whether or not to include a bill of rights. Many of the founding fathers. Took the position that having a bill of rights would actually be read as a restriction. So, um, one is staff, you know, I I think it's good to have a healthy. Policy or a healthy policy versus operations ballots here. And so when I see you saying. If you receive a court case, you shall move it as an operational type aspect because. We're getting into the weeds of the like computer programming, you know. This Boolean code gives you this thing. It's a binary decision. And playing devil's advocate, what if there was a court case that was severely miss? Uh, misapplied, like the rationale was clearly wrong and we knew that case would be overturned on appeal. That court case would likely not establish qualified immunity for a government actor because one of the. The nineteen eighty-three requirements is clearly established law. Uh, and so. There should be some room, I think, some discretion where. Staff receives a court case that they can look at it and say. You know, this this court case is is not going to fly. And so we want to be very careful if we just knee jerk remove it. But I think the risk for this is very low, super low, but I just wanted to air that that thought so that way you'd have the benefit of that, so.
Okay, trust plus, is that we need to go on break?
I I like it and just leave it in there. I mean, if we ever find a weird court case, you know, we'll. Put the book back. I'm sure they won't throw it away. I I think in addition, upon receipt makes it clear that.
Same, and shall be considered. For proactively being moved. And that way you don't have to do it. You're not required to, but you have that option.
Uh, does that work for staff? Okay. All right, so. So that last, okay, it would read, in addition, upon receipt of proofs that any material in the CLN collection has been determined by a court. In the US to be harmful to minors, it shall be considered. Or proactively moving the adult access only section.
Or to be. Considered tubing or considered for being, I don't know. Given consideration for proactively being moved. As of the, I can't words this right here on the screen, but you got the idea.
I don't like it. Just leave it. Shall be proactively moved. You know, so whatever, make a mistake.
I'm good either way.
Okay, um. So you're saying take out the be considered? So it would just read.
Just whatever dude.
Shall be proactively moved. Okay. Okay, so now we're in, in addition, upon receipt of proof that any material in the CLN collection has been determined by a court in the US to be harmful to minors, it shall be. Proactively moved to the adult access section. So we have majority consent on that?
I I guess, one one final thing, you know, the term proactive to me implies a sense of. Pre-action, not reaction. And so when you're saying we're going to proactively move something, you would do that before a court case. Is presented. Otherwise, it's reactionary and it by definition isn't proactive. Just, I don't know if I'm wrong about the definition of that term, but. It makes more sense just to say it shall be moved or shall immediately be moved.
I agree.
Okay, yes.
I mean, you could, you could order staff and legal counsel to be proactive about identifying court cases, finding that books are harmful to minors.
Okay, so do you guys want to put the word immediately in there instead of proactively? So it's, you know, not not six months from from now. Uh, okay, so it would say, in addition, upon receipt of proofs that any material in the CLN collection has been determined by a court in the US to be harmful to minors, it shall be immediately moved to the adult accessible section.
At least no later than sixty days. Because then it would trigger eighteen fifteen seventeen B.
Okay, well, I would think that immediately. Yes, I'm good with it. Okay, um, well, we've already got immediately up there, so. Just stick with that. Okay, so we're done with that section and we need to go on break. So we will be back in fifteen minutes. Okay, uh, so the recording is going and we are back from break. We. Well, I guess we didn't finish that section. Uh, do you guys want to keep? Going with the discussion of materials withdrawal and reconsideration, or you want to? Table it and then come back to it after we. Do the discussion material selection.
To make reference if you're asking.
Okay, uh.
I can go either way, but I was thinking we should just go finish the other one and then come back.
Okay, um, actually, uh, we'll have to have them both done. If we get done with them today, we'll have to have them both done. Before we decide to move either one or send either one of them to to review. Um, so why don't we move over to the uh discussion of material selection and acquisition policy? Uh, we'll get done with it, table it, and then go back to the other one. So, um. Okay, so I had one minor change, page three. Uh, under selection process. The second little tiny paragraph there. At the end of it, it says for the library's non-adult collection, I think that we had agreed. For the selection process, I think it would be appropriate to have a juvenile teen and young adult. So should we change that instead of non-adult collection to the juvenile teen and adult collections? Trust plus.
Yeah, that was an oversight. We were. That was pointed out. We should have listed those out.
Okay.
So it says, um. What was it?
Juvenile teen and adult.
He goes down into the other street articles, was that what you're saying?
Yeah, for the first selection process, I think it's appropriate to do that. I think that staff. We heard that.
No objections today, right?
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, actually, I guess faster way of saying that, but without objection, we're changing that. Did you announce even adult?
I think we have other questions.
Hearing no objection, it is changed. Okay, that's all I had. Uh, trust plus?
So I was hoping about more to add a little more to the report section. I guess it would be after the last. This is it. I'm looking at adding. Read it.
Okay, and report starts on page three.
The end of report, oh.
Okay, so it actually would be on page four or where?
Yeah, after the last. But what I was looking at was, um. After what's there, I would add another. I guess paragraph, mid split sentence, a summary PDF file showing copies of all material purchase orders. Placed during the preceding month. Comma with approver name and or signature. Shown on each comma shall be included in the regular monthly board packet and then electronic PDF copy posted with the meeting. Material on the CLN website. But the purpose of this is to get accountability. Not only to see what was purchased. But who's authorizing it and just make it a record. And I think. This would be a good accountability step. The board would see it and we could go back and look and there would be a PDF copy if someone wanted to look. But somebody's deciding on what books to buy. And I'd like to see accountability. I'd like to see the name, who the decision maker is, and we already have the. I would expect we already have purchase orders. We probably already have copies. So I'm just looking to take what we have and. Make a concatenated PDF, single PDF file. And just present it to the board each month.
Any comments from your seal?
And get by just in.
Hey, first, it sounds like it's a burden some staff to actually do that as a one. Number two, the. Library director is the one individual that answers to the group of trustees. I think that that's a subset as a as under the guise of the library director to keep track of. Purchase a particular book if there's an issue. And so, um. So between the burden of trying to keep track of each individual purchase and the fact that the library director is responsible and. They may delegate A or C. Purchasing authorization to someone else, they're still accountable to us. That's just the directors accountable to us. And so. I just feel that's the director's job that he keep track of who purchased something. With his or her permission through delegation. And so I I I don't see that as necessary. I think that's going down into the weeds personally. And I think it sounds like a burden. And 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 the comment.
Okay, and thank you for that, Assistant Director.
Uh, this definitely would be a burden. This would not. Currently exist. And also. Um, but I could be interpreting this incorrectly, but to me, there is like undertone of. Accusation or the assumption that. That aren't doing their job. So if our name is on something, then we're going to be more scared to do our job. Um. Now, I don't know if that's right or wrong, um, as far as how I'm interpreting it, but. Um, as the trustee said, the board is. Only responsible for the director. And this to me is like a really big overreach in the board's authority and. Needing to know who is buying what book.
Trust plus?
Why? I don't understand why it's a burden because you already have purchase orders and you must have a file where each purchase order that's signed. Is put in a file. So it's just. I'm not asking for. All the purchase orders for computers and everything, just anything for ordering. It's very. And they can be ordering. You know, fifty books at a time or something. It's just, it's a copy of the existing purchase order. And it's not the board so much looking to monitor it all as I want a record of it. And I want. I would like to have this so that, um. If if anything ever comes up, we can see who's making the decision and authorizing the purchase of material. I would imagine most of the time it wouldn't be looked at, but if something. If a book that turned out to be uh totally inappropriate was bought. I think somebody should be accountable for making the decision and this is the way to do it. And I don't think it's burdensome. Let's just. Make a, do the copy or take the PDFs, put them in the copier and, I mean, take the. Purchase orders you already have, put them in the copier, make a PDF file and you're done.
Excuse me, Assistant Director.
Um, so right now we, you know, are providing the monthly list of all of the items that were recently purchased. In the Excel format. And, um, I can just tell you that when the invoices are signed for. And paid, it's going to be the assistant director or the director that have the final approval on all of it. So it's not going to be down to individual staff. So. When you get that monthly report that you just started getting, it's. The assistant director and the director that have the final approval over every item.
Okay, um, if it wasn't burdensome, I would think that it might be useful, but I don't want to overstep the bounds of the board. So. I'm planning to agree with trustee Emily and the assistant director. So, um, trustee plus?
So I guess that's the answer that every. Book that is that appears on this Excel file was signed off by either assistant or director.
It's not even direct.
Then, then I've got the answer. So. I thought that there were other. Individual libraries, librarians ordering for their library and they were signing off or something. So it's, it's, it would be redundant then. I can draw this.
Great, uh, trustee Emily, did you have any? Further changes that you thought were needed in the material selection and acquisition policy?
Sorry, I had it on mute for a minute. I was eating a cracker.
I thought, well, you're considering your eating.
I I have no additions, subtractions, or changes to bank at this time. No, I'm I'm happy with the policy as a answer.
Okay, Helen, if there is no further changes on the material selection and position policy, uh, without objection, we will. Table this and go back to the, uh. Uh, materials withdrawal and reconsideration. I'm sorry, what's the question?
Because I don't think we were hung up on any particular section that we came up with.
Uh, yeah, anything in the documents or if there's something in the document, then maybe move on to forms?
Yes, I was wondering if the title needs to be changed or to add the word. After material withdrawal, reconsideration and relocation policy?
I mean, that is what is covered in this policy. It's a very long title for a policy, but it is an accurate description.
Prefer.
I mean, I I could go either way.
I'm flexible on it. I'm just saying, uh, because we have a. A defined paragraph or a section called reconsideration and another section called relocation. I'm just wondering if that was appropriate. I'm not obsessed with it by any means and I hope anything that's more generic.
Um, first. It would have to be reconsidered where it was located, so that might fall under reconsideration. Uh, trust plus?
So, but I need to find it, isn't reconsideration and see removing? So isn't that the same as withdrawal? So maybe it's instead of reconsideration, it should be materials withdrawal and relocation policy? Isn't reconsideration removing?
Or, oh, yeah, actually, this.
You can reconsider something and outside of, you know, is located. So it's all free. You can withdraw it, reconsider it, relocate it. It's a long title, but it's still.
But it's, is, is a reconsideration in our definition here about withdrawing it?
Um, it doesn't necessarily require you to withdraw.
Well, here, this section is reconsideration material and this section is relocation. Here on that plus.
Is the reconsideration about removing? That's why we didn't put it in relocate. Well, I had it under both originally. We wanted to separate it.
Or just for quick and safely, just accept it as already is, you know, so far on reconsiderations policy and the reconsideration is you're reconsidering whether you're where it's located or.
That's fine.
Okay, so, uh, we almost did it as is. All right. Then is there anything else in the document, Assistant Boss?
So we're keep saying, uh, the first bullet under withdrawal materials, retainment is not a word. Attention?
Uh, so page one, withdrawal of materials, duty section, first bullet, point attention. Okay.
Um, first, yeah, first of all, we did for special consideration and, and for retainment. Retainment is not a word. It's what word says. It underlines it in red.
Okay, so do we have the majority agreement on retention rather than retainment? Okay, if you have majority consensus on that. All right, anything else in the document or should we head on over to the forms? Okay, then we are on to the forms. Uh, so I guess the thing that we need to establish is, um, whether we're going to work off of the, um, forms, seemingly that the Assistant Director sent us, which, you know, I mean, we can all hear those a little bit. Or, yeah, well, I think we, we would have to work off of the request for reconsideration of material because we don't have any of those. So.
Did we get the one lawyer, the library?
I'm just being in your table packet. It's the one right? He says it. It's not in that packet. It's me.
I have this reconsideration of material. Okay, so, uh, uh, we just, uh, yeah, let's work on the request for reconsideration of material first. So I think I'm flying of the back page, uh, uh, front of the page, the bullet or asterisk versus what objections do you have to the material? Do you cite page numbers, chapters, or sections? Um, they're taking, it might be more clear to the person filling it out if it said these in four of the page numbers, chapters, or sections, um, because I'm just concerned that someone might just write down only the page numbers and not write out what their actual concerns are. So it would read what objections do you have to the material? These include page numbers, chapters. Or section, maybe.
Assistant Director's email today or one of the existing forms. I, I lost track. I was listening, but I can't keep track of this.
Uh, I guess you know that today?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's the request for reconsideration of material. The, the top part of it is in red lettering, saying that was.
Something up.
Yeah, I don't have it electronically. I'd have to type.
I can try to send it to you right now. We send the email.
Um, I don't have, I'm not connected to the email, but I just have to get this.
I'll say this is a consideration material with a red text on it.
Yeah, yeah, and we would buy them. Uh, yeah, so actually, I guess the first thing is that crossed out citizens. Um, we had previously agreed on that. Everyone's still in agreement with that, removing the word citizens. Okay, and I'm in agreement with that. So we'll, is. Okay, so it would be, um, I'm not sure mine formatted the same as your guys' is. So it's Assistant Director?
I just want to just provide a little background. So, um, in the past, we have received reconsideration forms that are partially filled out and it's made it difficult for us to do our job. So, um, I marked things as required with the asterisk so that we can make sure we had a completed version of the form. We can move forward in a timely fashion. So that's why that is included on both of the forms. Um, and what's I also wanted to have the forms have the same format. So I put instructions at the top of each form and then, uh, made it clear to the customer who would be using it, what the exact steps are and how they need to submit it. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, I like that and appreciate it. Thank you. Assistant Boss?
I'm, I'm trying to see what the significance of the red is. Is that changes to what was on this form or?
Assistant Director?
The, so the one that has citizens crossed out at the top with the red, we did not have instructions on that form currently. So I added instruction. So that's why it's all red.
So this, this is what I had. So you're saying it's red because it wasn't on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And what about the other, the other red lines?
Um, the other red lines were taken because I compared other forms from other libraries and um, also because of the changes in the law. I just, we needed to know if they did obtain the material from the community library network. And I don't believe that was ever asked on here.
Some libraries require a call number. You could verify it was a CLA book.
Can, can, can someone not check it out? Just see it on the shelf? Well, that's what I thought of.
Yeah, it just looks like it's required to answer the question. I think it was required to check it out. Attorney?
At the last meeting, our attorney said that they have to have received that item. It doesn't necessarily mean they have to have checked it out, but they have to have received it.
Yeah, but, um, I would think that that would be the case for reconsideration of material. That would be for their relocation material.
I was just going to say, if they pick the book off the shelf and go sit in a chair, finish it, they can put it back. And then they have attained it.
Okay, um, all right. So, so I only had the one little change. I'm hoping that we can get through this form quickly and get to the other one. So, so the section that has the red asterisk, uh, what objections do you have to the material? But it's the first question where there's a big space to answer it. Should we, and do you think that it would make it more clear to people that they write, uh, that if we put please include page numbers, chapters, or sections, that that would make it obvious to them that, you know, we provide an answer and the page number?
Oh, include that.
Yeah, so just if, if it says please cite page numbers, I'm thinking someone might just write down a bunch of page numbers without any explanation.
The Boise State Albertson's Library says, what concerns you about this resource? Please be specific citing pages and or sections. So that's a pretty close flavor to what you have here.
Uh, Assistant Boss?
I, I think just changing site to include that confirms that you're asking for more.
Okay, so we would be favorable, Assistant Hamley?
Should I say we are? Is it after you read the material? Is it after that, which is what objections you have?
Yes, yes, I was just, um, suggesting that, but what objections do you have of the material? Please include page numbers, chapters, or sections.
To be clarified, otherwise it's too generic and you gotta dig through the entire piece of material to find what you're having an issue with.
Okay, um, Helen, are there any other changes to the form or should we move on to the next one?
So.
Assistant Boss?
The next question, what are your reasons for finding the material offensive? And indicate if you feel unfair to us. How's that different from the previous question? What are your objections? You're, you're asking for objections again. Um, I don't think that question is necessary in return for, so.
Assistant Director?
And that question on the top of page two, it's essentially giving us more information about why they find it offensive. Um, yes, they can cite the specific pages or chapters, but it's helpful to us to know what their logic is, what their reasoning is. And, um, it can guide us as we move forward with the review process. So I would consider it um, an important piece of this form. And it also, um, you know, asks what is objectionable for all readers, listeners, and viewers? Or is it just a particular age group? So it's just further, um, clarifying what their concerns.
Assistant Boss?
So basically, you're asking on the first question at the bottom of the first page, what are the objections? And they're just supposed to list objections of page number. And then you're asking for reasons for finding it that way. I don't.
Can I explain?
Yeah.
Yes, Assistant Director.
So like an example would be someone might say this book on page one seventy-two, page, you know, seven, three, and concerning that second question, they will say because of gun violence and murder of a child. So it's like truly, like you just said, the first question is, please tell us exactly what you're bothered and then tell us why you're bothered.
Is there, please indicate your objections or, or recommendations as completely and specifically as possible. And maybe if someone says, I think that book has flaws and whatever, the young adult area rather than the juvenile. Maybe let's then give us a suggestion on what, what disposition they're looking for.
Assistant student? Okay.
Please indicate your objections or recommendations.
Yes.
And it gives you a better feel for what you're looking for itself. Unless there's another part of the form that asked for that already. I don't hope it does.
Uh, the last question, is it audio or video material would you recommend? No, okay, that was probably. How could your concerns about the resource be resolved? That.
Yeah.
Smelling a little stink on the seat of a particular document, yes.
Okay, uh, Assistant Boss?
But, so I don't think that last question is even necessary. Why, why get somebody to go off on another book or video or something? They're talking about one that they found objectionable or something that got an issue. But don't burden them with trying to bring, this really has nothing to do with it whatsoever. I'd like to get rid of the last question.
Um, it, it's not asterisked, so it's not required, but I, I think, you know, a lot of times people might have a recommendation that covers the topic, um, about, you know, whatever was objectionable in the book. Assistant Director?
That is correct, and it's actually a useful question because they, the customer will sometimes provide another title or a series of titles. And then we can go out and review and see if they're appropriate for the collection. So it helps us build a collection that's more suitable for our community, and that's what they deem. So it could be seen as extra work, but it's also not required, but it's also helpful.
Assistant Boss?
Then how about just, instead of saying what book or audio, um, do you have a suggested book or audio? That makes it a little bit easier to start back to question.
Or we could just leave it as is. Not trusting him.
Sure, so it's an optional, that other question was in, it was in question. Um, this thing is doing, rather, this one is not required to be responded to, so I'm fine with it is as, as, as things.
Okay, uh, so, um, I don't think we have to completely leave that as is, just for the sake of time. Uh, there's no objection, then we could move on to the other form. Right, Assistant Boss?
So to keep boss from doing this, my thought, and I think that's what we're saying here, is if you can email a PDF scan copy of it, give it in person or mail. But I don't think that there's, it should be, I don't think that's what this is, but, uh, I don't think it should be an online form that can just be filled out and sent and hit return. Is, is this a PDF that gets scanned and sent in?
Assistant.
I think it's a form that you can fill out on our website. I think you have to print out this PDF and then, you know, that what you're asking.
Yeah. So it would be, they would have to fill it out.
Correct.
They can type it in if they want to fill it out and scan it and send a scan. I mean, they can email a scan, which enough of that. I, I think that's great.
So that would solve a lot of the dot problem?
Yeah.
Okay, Helen, uh, are we ready to move on to the other form?
Um, question.
Well, all right, Assistant Boss?
Um, does it say here any place that you must be a member to fill this out? Do you have to have a card number basically?
It does not.
It's not member signature. I, I don't mind if it says that. I mean, if somebody's not a member, I think they should still be able to fill it out.
We can remove member with signature.
Yeah.
Um, uh, for reconsideration, I'm not opposed to them having to be. It's the relocation that should be open to anyone who's been harmed. Uh, this is manager?
It's in the policy that you have finished. Um, waiting, you know, to forward on, but it's, um, requests for reconsideration are only accepted from community library network residents for community library network owned material. So it's in the policy.
Okay.
Okay, um, so should we add a member number? Uh, no, okay, just save it as this. Okay. Uh, Assistant Boss, do you have any other additions or should we move on to the usual? Okay. Uh, we're briefly done with that and we're moving on to the other form. Uh, okay, so the decision that first we need to make is whether we are working off of the Assistant the staff or the one that was emailed today, uh, the request for relocation of material by staff or from the, um, the form that you were working on already. And do you have a reference, Assistant Hamley?
She says she liked the heading, stayed the same as the other form. So I'm not saying, I'm, I'm supporting whatever's below that. Says she liked the heading, stayed the same as the other form, so I'm not saying, I'm I'm supporting it whatever's below that, but that was a good idea, so I don't know if that gets past storms of the one we had trustee class provided once, the top's heading or not, but, um, I like the idea if something's easier to read and it's the same format, that's, otherwise I can't digest the rest of it that fast. I did look at it today, though.
Uh, good points. Uh, just boss.
Well, yeah, that was, I didn't work on this form last time, or we didn't really do it. We started to get some ideas, but it should say relocation. But what's missing is we have to put the Idaho code in uh, on this one. And I.
On your.
See emails today that were working from.
No, the one that was, the one that was emailed today has the the whole Idaho code in it, including fifteen seventeen B.
Where?
Much, I think that's what I'm looking at it at. Only it only requires, I think, that we have what harmful minors is, and this went well beyond that.
Uh, um.
So.
I always think with the whole eight and fifty-four things. Um.
I think what I'm saying is not required, I don't think.
Oh, what is?
The new.
Definitely.
It says that the harmful to minors definition must be in there. It doesn't say anything else, to my knowledge.
Um.
That's page three of that.
Oh, I see, so that was an angle back.
So.
Oh, it is. Okay, I didn't know that was a form.
Okay, I think it did say it was harmful to minors, but, uh, they and not having a problem with being there, it's in fifteen fourteen being in there. Um.
You were just saying, we've gone, we exceeded the minimum requirement.
Okay, um, and I I my preference would be to work on the the draft that staff sent out today. You can change that as we would. Uh, trust of us.
So. The, um, legal counsel suggested this, I put the questions it was saying in here. Did you receive or did the material receive meet the following definition? And that was actually part of the question, is the definition right in there as opposed to sticking it in the, but.
That's provided earlier.
Yeah, that that would be the.
Yeah, but what I'm what I'm saying is legal, I forgot what's the legal, uh, counsel suggested that this definition be part of the question. And the one staff has, it's it's not.
That's a question. I thought the, uh, chair said we're trying to determine which document we're working from right now.
Yes, so.
We determine that yet?
Uh, my preference is the the draft that was emailed out today by staff. Um, that's boss.
Yeah, that that's fine, because I can submit, we're missing, the other one's missing, the heading is just, uh, yeah, now we're getting into the details.
Okay, now we know where we are. Thank you.
Okay, uh, as a business manager.
Um. Trusty class was concerned that we didn't have the question about the harmful minors, but we do. And it's a required question, and it's, is this request for review of material you consider harmful to minors, yes or no? And underneath it, it says please, or see section Idaho code section eighteen fifteen fourteen, eighteen fifteen seventeen B to listed at the bottom of this form. So we are including what the attorney had invited us to include.
All right, um, yes, so we are grouping. That was sent out today. I don't have that aired out. Um. Okay, so did you obtain the material from the community library network? That was one of the questions that the attorney wanted in there. And the next question, did you check out the material? I'm not sure that that's relevant.
I think that should be some material, um, seen or that a minor have access to this material. I think I think that's what we're trying to go with this. Whether they checked it out or whether they picked it up and sat there in the library and read it.
And, uh, just plus.
So the question before was, um, instead of did the first question here, did you obtain, that was, did a minor obtain material considered harmful to minors?
Okay.
Uh, assistant director.
Um, if you look at the bottom of the first page, I, there's clarification and it says, are you a minor or are you a parent or legal guardian of a minor? So it's just breaking out that question into two questions. And if you don't want us to have the, did you check out the material? That's fine, we can remove that. I don't, I'm not committed to that.
Well, okay, so so we have, we have consensus on removing, did you check out the material?
Um, yeah.
Yes, okay, so we do have consensus that is officially removed.
But.
Uh, trust of us.
But the question that legal wanted us to ask was, did a minor obtain material harmful, considered minors? Be at that some point.
Uh, yeah, I think we just need to.
That's why I closed the loop. Um, there may be one concept missing. So did you, okay, whoever's filling this out, it can be a minor or it can be a parent, right? So when you say, did you obtain the material? Great, um, they could say no, because their minor did. And then it says, are you a minor or a parent? And they could say, I'm a parent. So don't actually answer the question if a parent or a minor obtains material. And so I would like clarification there. There's one more concept that needs to be included. Did the minor or the parent obtain the material? And so it depends on who's filling out the form, whether that concept is missing or not.
Right.
So it's almost there, just missing that one little concept.
Uh, just boss.
I think we just need to go add this first question. But you add, did did a minor obtain material considered harmful to minors? That's, that was the very first question. And then you could say, did you get it from the community library network?
Uh, I'm sorry, what's for that?
Uh, ahead of the the first question, did you obtain material with GLM? Put in the first question up there, which is, did a minor gain material considered harmful to minors? Because that was his primary concern.
Um. Or we could, could we have it all part of the same sentence? Did a minor obtain the material? Did, did a minor obtain materials harmful to minors from the community library network? Do you have that all in one sentence?
It, that's fine. If if you answer, yes, did you obtain the material from the community library network? Yes. And then you say, are you a parent or legal guardian of a minor? Yes. That doesn't get us to, did a minor obtain material? So that is a condition precedent to the applicability of the entire statute, which requires that the minor obtains the material or the parent or legal guardian of a minor who obtained material. Does that make sense? You can be a parent and you could obtain material, doesn't violate the statute. Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense, just there's, um.
I didn't choose.
A lot of parts are. Okay, so. All right, so first.
And the other part of it is, if we don't define material, then you can obtain material, but unless it's material harmful to minors, it doesn't matter.
Okay, so did a minor obtain material considered harmful to minors? Is that?
The very first question.
That's enough for one question. We have.
So they believe this is their harmful to minors, because that's what this consideration is going in. I may get sent back saying, uh, no, it's not, it's not considered harmful to minors. I think a person complaining will call it, like you said, a negative term there. Believes it is maybe considered harmful to minors. So I would, I would throw an extra word in there.
I I think the person, they're filling out the form, so they have the belief that it is harmful to minors. My question would, that I would respectfully submit is, did a minor obtain material harmful to minors?
I like that.
Okay, something with that.
Because.
Take off the word considered.
Who considered it? Was it the child, is it the adult, is it the neighbor? Um, that's not tethered to a subject, so I think it's inappropriate. And we know that the person filling out the form has the belief, or else they wouldn't be filling out the form.
Okay, so majority consent on did a minor obtain material harmful to minors? I'm good. Which, okay, Emily's good, that's.
You're saying that, take off considered.
Yep, so did a minor obtain material harmful to minors? I have no, business manager?
Since we're working off the draft that staff had emailed, um, does that question, did a minor obtain material harmful to minors, become the first required question or the second required question?
First.
And it was.
That's what.
And then.
I think they're just confused because you're editing it differently on the screen.
Well, he's editing, yeah, his draft.
That's all, general draft, right, huh? I'm just saying, that's this question needs to get added.
So follow up then, um, second question is still, did you obtain material from the community library network? Or is it, did you or a minor obtain the material from the community library network?
Um.
Was was the, was the material obtained?
And that's fine, but is that the second question?
He just was instead of you.
Yeah, I'm just asking, is that question or two? Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, so the second question would be, are you a minor or parent guardian of minor received material?
Or, no, third question.
Sure.
This is not the right. Well, again. I think the the second question that we get consensus to change it to, was the material obtained from community library network? Not up there, but instead of did you obtain? Because we don't know if it's who's, it's just the the material that was a minor obtained, was the material obtained from the community library network? So might be a felt that didn't get it, because the not up there.
Okay, can you, you see, I don't know that moved. Okay, so what's next?
The second sentence.
Yeah, in a Word document, just type them out and. Thank you.
There's a Word doc in your email. You could directly edit her draft.
You can.
Make it so.
I'll just add questions here. So the consensus, the question is, is the second question reworded this way?
Uh, was the material named?
Instead of did you have name?
Okay. Uh, all right, so the second question is, was the material obtained?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, was the material obtained from the community library network? You have, um, agreement on that? Okay, I mean, yes, okay, so, uh, yes, we have majority consent, and that is now changed.
Not being able to see a screen, a screen, a screen, can you maybe the three questions now wrong, but we're finishing number three, but can I hear those three, so I know where we are next?
No, we're at two.
Oh, that would be excellent. Thank you, business manager.
Question number one, did a minor obtain material harmful to minors, yes or no? Question number two, was the material obtained from the community library network, yes or no? Question number three, are you a minor with a checkbox or a parent or legal guardian of a minor with a checkbox?
Hey, like it, thank you.
Now, that that doesn't quite close the loop, because they need to, it needs to say who obtained the material. So are you a minor or a parent or legal guardian? Are you a minor who obtained the material or a parent or legal guardian of a minor who obtained the material? Because we still can answer yes and not meet the statute. So the one that's on the screen, are you the minor? Who, if they answer a minor obtained the material, that refers to that question. Otherwise, it needs to say, are you a minor who obtained material? And so I'm talking about the difference between staff draft and that draft, either one could be made to work.
Are you saying? Are you a minor or a parent or legal guardian of a minor who obtained material harmful to minors? Okay, last question.
That would make your staff draft work if you inserted that phrase before the question mark. Or if we're using this version, I would change received to obtained.
You want me to read that again?
Last one, are you even reading it?
Um, I guess I would.
Obtain the material harmful to minor.
obtain the.
Obtain material harmful to minors.
Okay. Uh, isn't there?
And there need, that question number three, would it be possible to put the information that's in parentheses on this staff draft, where it says, see Idaho code at the bottom of this form underneath there, since we're talking about harmful to minors?
We have a specific, well.
And then we would just wouldn't ask that. Oh, well, I guess never.
I I think it's okay to make it just absolutely fundamentally clear. You could say, are are you requesting that the material be relocated to an adult access only section? See eighteen fifteen fourteen and eighteen fifteen seventeen B two? Are you requesting that the material be relocated to an area with adult access only? Yes or no?
That's where you go.
Okay.
See the sections.
Um.
Yes.
Well, what I'm wondering is on this, do we have to say, I mean, the first question both of these now is, uh, did a minor obtain material harmful to minors? Is, uh, did a minor obtain material harmful to minors? Now we just say the next question, was the material? I don't think you have to go say. Harmful, was the harmful to minor material? Do you have to say that again, or you can just say material based on the first question? And then the third one, do we, can we just say obtain the material? You have to say harmful to minor every time.
You know, I I would suggest to clear clarify that you could have, was the material obtained from community library network be an if yes? Comma. So did a minor obtain material harmful to minors? Yes or no? If yes, was the material obtained from the community library network?
A conditional full chart.
Uh, yeah, I don't know that that particularly helps, but, um, what I'm saying is, does it need, you need to put the phrase harmful to minors every time?
That would be covered if it, it's if yes, was the material. And cause it just, it means that it's a continuation of the, no, the next, the next line down. So if yes, was the material obtained?
So you don't need to put harmful to minor, material harmful to minor there, you just say material.
The way I do it is I define the term material, so I would use. Did a minor obtain material harmful to minors? And I would say parentheses. Apostrophe material, and then every time I use the word material, it means material harmful to minors. But the way it reads, I mean, I think the average person's gonna say. Did a minor obtain material harmful to minors? Yes. And then when you say. Was the material you're referring to the the first question.
We could put if yes, was that material obtained for that, make it. Or third. Right, that's it.
You don't have to apostrophe, add apostrophes after that. Every time you use the word. Yeah, quotes, apostrophes, whatever.
So we already had, uh, census on the second question and we're.
Well, if we're gonna do that, then we need to take out material, the harmful to minors out of the third question. If we're gonna define it.
Okay, so the third, third one that we need consensus on is. Are you the minor or the parent? Already, uh, parent slash guardian of the minor who obtained the material? You have census on it? Yeah, I mean, yes.
Um.
Response?
Do we have the, I mean, is that clear? We put yes, no, or something extra, or what's the?
Um.
Uh, it could be a statement with a selection, I am the. Minor or parent guardian of the minor.
But we're just leaving a a blank line, what, is that clear that they're supposed to fill it out?
Well, it just doesn't have the yes or no. After it, so it's a two-part answer, you have to select minor or parent and then yes or no. I think that makes it more confusing. I think the yes or no needs to be after the sentence, like the other ones.
Okay, so remove the blank and.
It's now you're.
At the end of the question.
Don't you want to know which one they are?
Yeah, but they'll indicate it with the blank, otherwise it turns into a three-part question. I am the minor, yes, I'm not the parent, no, and then I am the minor that obtained the material.
So what are you putting here? It's just no?
I guess not at the end. Do we need to make questions? Or, um, parentheses, we can put circle.
It works with the blanks after minor, parent or guardian, but it doesn't work without them. Cause then you still have to indicate it and answer yes or no.
Then you put yes, no.
Or make it two questions, just, are you the minor who obtained it? Or are you the parent or guardian? And then they could say yes, then they could say no.
Uh. Okay, so did you want blanks in there or did you want yes, no?
Yeah, we need to be a blank.
Okay, yeah.
I would either leave it the way it was and add the yes, no to the end of the question. Or I'd make it two questions, are you the minor who obtained the material? Or are you the parent or guardian who obtained the material?
How do they know what to do with the blanks then?
Like a hospital, you just know how to. Yeah, I don't.
Uh, maybe we can put a check mark in there that's really faint. Um. But I think the yes, no are still supposed to be at the end, isn't it? Yeah.
So if they leave both checks. Line, they would put no.
Uh, business manager?
Leave the blanks and then what you're doing there with the yes, no in parentheses, but indicate. What letter to put in the blank?
Or is it just supposed to circle at the end? Yes or no?
I don't think it matters. I think you're gonna get all varieties and responses.
I don't know, but it really matters for processing it, whether the.
And the purpose of this question is to elicit. The statutory framework, which is a requirement that it. Be the minor or the parent or the guardian, because it can't be the non guardian. Right? The minor can obtain it and then fill out the relocation request. The parent of a minor who obtained it can fill it out. But, you know, I guess a grandmother could, but the grandmother who's not the the guardian is gonna have the cause of action. Right? And the statute says that. Prior to the filing of a cause of action. The minor, parent or legal guardian has provided written notice. So we're trying to find out. Did the minor or the parent or legal guardian fill this out?
Should it say legal here, your parent after parent?
I I don't think we're concerned about. Their interpretation of if they're a legal guardian or not, if they're willing to represent, they're the parent or guardian. They're likely gonna be the legal parent or guardian.
This is confusing, I have yes, yes, no for each.
Business manager?
Into two questions. Are you the minor who obtained the material? Yes or no? Next question, are you the parent or guardian of the minor who obtained the material? Yes or no?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next question for consensus is, are you the minor who obtained them here? Yes, no? Uh, do we have agreement on that? Yes. Okay, we have, uh, agree, uh, majority agreement on that. Next question, are you the parent slash guardian of the minor who obtained material? Yes or no? I mean, yes. Were you the parent slash guardian of the minor who obtained the material? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah. They can, they can give it to the right one.
Okay.
As I just indicated.
Okay. Uh, and the last question to the material, our last question up there. Well.
Oh.
Um. Uh, well, I guess we'll go. That.
This, this was the way. Of course, can you? But it needs to.
Um. Okay, well, so before we go on to. Uh, I don't, we go to the next question on the, uh. The staff's draft of this form. Which was, uh, have you read our material selection and acquisition policy? Yes or no? I think. I think that's a good thing to encourage people to do. Trust us.
I I think we should keep on the roll about the material. And put that, those questions about the policies after. This question about the material of an epidemic. Cause we're, we're talking about the material.
Well, if we do that question. Sorry, this is probably terribly confusing for you, trusty handling. Um. The question that was on the last draft. Did the material receive to meet the following definition? Well, then you would immediately have to have the eighteen fifteen fourteen following that. So maybe we can change that, did the material or obtained? Meet. Uh, the definitions at the end of this form?
This little one that came up in an email on my screen, which one, which one are we debating there?
Okay, so this question is on the plus draft. Um, it reads, did the material receive to meet the following definition, but I think that that should be changed to. Did the material obtained? Meet the definitions at the end of this form? Uh, legal, do you think that's appropriate?
Well, the statute requires that. Definition of harmful to minors is provided in section eighteen fifteen fourteen, be included in the form. There's a number of ways you could do it, you could have. Last draft, which is up here, you could have it cited like staff, you could put it in the first question, did a minor obtain material harmful to minors? As defined in Idaho code and you could put the site there. There's a number of ways of doing it, but the code. Definition still must be in the form. So those are two separate questions.
Okay, so we would be. Going back to the first question that we agreed on, did a minor obtain material harmful to minors and adding? As defined in statute? And then.
I would say Idaho, Idaho code. Yes.
Eighteen fifteen fourteen.
I think it's section six. Section six. So paren six.
Oh. With the definition right there.
Uh, well, they they'll be able to see it, cause it's gonna be verbatim. On a form, we we're gonna leave that. It has to contain the definition, so. They'll be able to refer to the definition on the form. Wherever it's included.
Uh, yes, this is not different.
Um, I recommend putting the definition at the end because. As a customer filling out this form, they, we need to get them to focus on the most important parts and. I don't know that reading the definition right then, there is the most important part, we need them to work through the questions. So if we could just say refer to it at the end of the document, that would probably be the most beneficial user experience.
Okay, yeah, I'd like it at the end as well, um, so see bottom of this form, is that? Okay, so the first sentence now reads, uh, i- if we decide to change it, did a minor obtain material harmful to minors? Uh, material in quotes and parentheses. As defined in Idaho code, section eighteen fifteen fourteen, uh, parentheses six, and then parentheses, see bottom of this form. That sound good?
Yeah. Listen to me and as long as you go ahead and fill out the form kind of more quickly. And you still have some references required at the bottom of the form. I I prefer that, yes.
I think we should add eighteen fifteen seventeen B two as well, because we have that listed. On staff draft. So just put eighteen fifteen fourteen six and eighteen fifteen seventeen B two. Right? Keep it consistent.
Okay, and, uh, trustee, how many do you agree to that?
Yes.
Okay, I agree to it.
What was it?
Uh, eighteen fifteen seventeen B.
Two.
And.
It's capital B paren two.
Like that?
You could even just say see below.
Okay, and should it in between eighteen fifteen sixteen or eighteen fifteen fourteen six, should it be or or and?
The law just says that if, which is. Second.
Well. Fifteen seventeen B two says any material harmful to minors, but it also says. Other things in B and C. You know, a picture. Of a person or a portion of the human body that depicts nudity and is harmful to minors. So it's, it's gotta be harmful to minors regardless. So I don't, or an and I don't think. The average citizen's gonna be parsing the the conjunctives or disjunctive nature of the sentence to. Withdraw their requests, so I think or is fine, and is fine.
Uh, people could be either.
Yeah, so I I'm fine with whatever, subject to staffs.
Okay, um, and we did already have. Majority consent on making those changes on that first question, is that all of the questions that?
Now we can go through what.
Okay, all right, so now we're going to the staff draft. Uh, that was email out today. Uh, have you read our material selection and acquisition policy? I was, I think that could be. Very useful to infer.
I have no, I see no threat about that.
Okay, all right, so we have, uh, majority consensus on that.
Yeah.
Uh, next question, have you read our materials withdrawal or reconsideration policy? Okay, I'm also a yes on that, so. All right, so we have majority consent on that. Um, okay, and that last question there was already incorporated in one of the other questions. Okay. So already consent to strike, that is this request for review of majority consent on minors. Okay, and we already have the other question, so is that?
Um, just, you know.
Response?
Instead of saying. Have you read our materials? Should we say, have you read the CLN material selection? Uh, CLN materials withdrawal?
Uh, so change both of them, um, because. Last two questions, change them both to CLN materials and material. Uh, I agree with that. All right. I had no other changes to staff. Draft of that policy. Interesting, only did you have any other changes?
Did I say there objections you have in the material, sites of progress and pages or so forth? I'll say.
Um.
I think we need to.
This is page two of the form.
Be included.
Okay, yeah, so the, the thing, question that we changed on the other one, what objections do you have to the material, please include these site page numbers? But you're in with that? Okay, have majority there to make that change. I trust us.
So on the. On the. On the form, we asked the question, are you requesting the material be relocated? That isn't on here, maybe not need that? That's kind of redundant because that's what this form is. I think that came from the. Attorney. Did I miss it? Is it somewhere?
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know that we need to know that because the. If we immediately see that it's harmful to minors and they got it from us, it's like. Gets us into action right away, whereas our reconsideration form is not that immediate of action, it's not a legal requirement. So I think it'd be redundant to have that.
But I'm confused, because I feel like we're editing classes draft, but we were going off of your draft, so I'm just getting very confused about.
Very confused.
This is where we have classes draft and we're editing classes draft, but we're not following your draft, so there's no redundancy.
I'm just pointing out that that question didn't go on to the staff form.
Okay, so we really want. But, but we did include it already because I said, we amended your question right to say. Are you requesting the relocation of the material harmful to minors?
I also wanna say that, uh, the board wanted the form short and easy. And so that's why all the same questions aren't on this form and they were on their reconsideration.
And, and that question had consensus of the board, it is not included in the giraffe that's on the screen. So it's, it's not redundant on the flash draft, but it is redundant if we're working off staff trap, which isn't on the screen.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so.
So.
Okay.
Uh, first of all.
I, I was just asking because it was a question that we, I typed in there last time that we thought was necessary, but I don't think it is because that's what the form is. You're filling out request for reconsideration, so it could be up there.
But, but, but this is not reconsideration, this is relocation.
Well. It's supposed to say.
It's relocation.
I don't think it hurts at all to ask the person, are they requesting this to be relocated to an, an area with adult access only?
So add that to.
It'd be like question number five. So you want me to read one?
I.
Is it before, after, have they read the policy?
Before.
Is that one that puts all the, the required answers above the.
Okay, ask that, yes.
Why? Can I read what I have?
Yeah, are, are we saying you want to add that question back in? Is that what I just heard you say?
It, it's in, it's just not in that. Cause you're editing a request for reconsideration policy and we're amending the staff draft relocation policy.
No, I'm not doing reconsideration today, I never changed the name.
Okay.
I just, don't, don't worry about that, this is. I was trying to get the questions that you asked at the last meeting to include it, and I thought that was one that we wanted.
It is, but I don't think it's necessary since the form is request for relocation.
Okay, so that's fine, stop in the back and forth with the business manager.
Okay, on the request for the relocation of material that staff provided. Below the title, author, publisher, copyright date. Question one, did a minor obtain material harmful to minors, minors? Or materials, I'm sorry. Question two, was the material obtained from the community library network? No.
We have to include as defined in.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that is part of question one, so materials as defined by Idaho code. Eighteen fifteen fourteen six or eighteen fifteen seventeen B two? That correct question one?
No.
Question two, was the material obtained from the CLN? Question three, are you the minor who obtained the material? Yes or no? Question four, are you the parent guardian who obtained the material? Yes or no? Question five. Are you requesting the material to be relocated to an adult access only section? Yes or no? And that's. Where I had put see Idaho code below. But I think we're putting that in question one.
The, the only thing I heard was that you need to have of the minor after your parent or guardian.
Okay.
There's a new question in here that's not on.
Well, it was one that the board already had consent on, but it's not reflected on the screen. And it's the fifth question business manager just read.
Which are, are you requesting the material to be relocated, relocated to an adult only access? Or is it adults access?
Are you requesting the material to be relocated to an adult access only section?
You're saying that's already on the staff form?
It was, it was a suggestion that the attorney had made today that we had it.
Okay, so then we need to get consensus on that. Thanks.
When, when, when did you add that? Because it is on the packet, it was.
The attorney advised that today and the board had already consented. To having that added.
In the.
In today's meeting.
In the policy.
In the form.
I did get that.
Okay, um, well then, is there? Anything else for the form?
Well, the draft of the form, many, much easier, appreciate that. Thank you to Assistant Director for, for the team access Microsoft, even though it wasn't accessible there, thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Yes.
We leaving page two, spell all of the. Okay.
Of the site.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, there are no other changes? Uh, well. That would be the case.
Yeah, but I do that.
Okay, so that's me.
And we not put member on this and just a signature?
Uh, oh, okay, so that would be a change. Um, yes, I am definitely agreeable to that. And so, um, above the codes that are listed, there's a section there, it says member signature, date, name, blah, blah, blah. Um, they should not need to be a member. Murdered to, or materials harmful to minors. But we just say signature. Uh, no, okay, so I'm agreeable to that, and last you suggested it, so I'm assuming you're agreeable to it. Okay, so we have a majority consent on that. Uh, are there any further changes, trusty boss?
I was just gonna ask when staff reworks it to, uh. Make sure. To, to leave space for people to write things, or maybe, maybe move some of this down and. Anyway.
Yeah, that's.
You'll, you'll work it.
Alright, any further changes? Sorry, what?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, well then, uh, I moved that we send the materials withdrawal and reconsideration. Policy and forms as amended. Uh. Oh. To our legal counsel for review. Um. The graphics.
Is there a turning on deadline? That needs to be in that.
Um, we have it. I don't think so, just as soon as possible, we need to get it to the attorney, something to get it back to us as soon as possible.
When's the next meeting when the board can approve it?
Uh, Monday.
Operatively.
Monday.
Prior to July one.
Yeah.
Is that the only meeting?
Now we have, uh.
Not asking to add a meeting, just asking.
Yeah, no, we have a, a training with, uh, Idaho Commission for Libraries on the twenty fourth. Um. So before then, if possible, but if not, it's twenty fourth. You were. What kind of? Yeah, but yeah, so the seventeenth, if possible.
You told me to jump, but I was kind of high, it's up to you guys, I just, it'd be nice. It would be nice to have the seventeenth in case we need to add it to the agenda on the twenty fourth if we need to do something.
Yeah.
So I'll accommodate it if staff can accommodate it, but I won't force staff to. Okay.
Okay, alright, you're done, okay, so it has been moved that we send the materials withdrawal and reconsideration policy and forms as amended. To our legal counsel for review. And. Uh, if. Okay, trust, trust you boss?
So I have the two policies, I do not have the forms and you ladies have the forms, so I will email tonight. To, to you, okay, to Lindsay and copy the chair.
Okay.
What I have and then, uh.
And then we'll get them.
You get the forms and off to, I, I'm not gonna send them to legal, okay?
Okay, if there is no further discussion, uh, it has been moved that we send the materials withdrawal and reconsideration policy and forms as amended to our legal council for review, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Hey, this unanimous, and so now the materials withdrawal and reconsideration policy and forms as amended. Will be sent to our legal counsel for review. Alright, and then we need to do the, the other one, and. So, uh, that's the boss.
We didn't ask, but I'm, I'm hoping that he puts something I'm writing on it. You're gonna do this. I think with legal giving you review verbally.
Uh, that's, uh, oh, actually, I guess we could. Um.
I prefer something in writing.
Well, I can tell you preliminarily, if the changes to the, um. The new act are made in the form, it's fine, and the section of the policy that states essentially the statute will be okay. So that's likely to come back with approval. Don't know if it makes sense to put that part in writing.
Okay.
I'd be happy to put objections or any issues in writings to be very clear and the, what I would like to do with staff. Something, look, if it, if it mostly passes, we've got a deadline, we'll hit it, but if there's something we don't agree with or we need. I'm gonna work very hard to make sure I can get with staff and at least propose something that we're all okay with. And present it to you and you could thumbs up or thumbs down.
Okay.
So, so if there's something that just won't work, I would like to provide an alternative and then we'll give you rationale with that supporting case law, whatever, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a question. Are you going to be at the meeting on the seventeenth at Harrison?
Sure. Let me check.
I just, if you needed to talk to.
Okay.
Okay, uh.
That's the annual one, right, yeah.
The regular.
Yeah. I don't think I have any conflict, so. Good.
Okay, so our other policy was tabled, and so we'll take it off the table without objection. Um, there were no further changes on that. Uh, we tabled this.
You just agree both.
No, we didn't, just wanna. Um, we can figure two separate action items, I figured the motion had to be two separate ones, um, so. Uh, I'm, I'm a, that we send the materials selection and acquisition policy as amended to our legal counsel for review. There, any further, or. There any discussion on that? Okay. It has been moved that we send the material selection and acquisition policy as amended to our legal counsel for review, all those in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye, uh, okay, so I just have it and the motion is adopted, the material selection and acquisition policy as amended, what he sent to our. Alright, so then the last thing is set special.
Just a clarification, so I have two policies and two forms.
Yep.
Yeah, actually, and we, uh, what comment policy should have already been sent to you?
Three policies, two forms, okay?
Okay, so our next item is set special and regular meeting dates. And we got anything?
See, you see, two P M, said, right?
Uh, yes, that one's already set, that's a regular meeting. Okay, if there, Chris Cost.
I just gonna mention, I've got a conflict with the one in July twenty sixth. That we set, I don't know whether we could move it a day earlier or why you picked that day? And I don't, it's not even on the list here, and.
I'm doing this meeting or, I have only two or four possible budget meetings, am I correct?
Just in your, over June seventeenth board, at the bottom of the agenda.
Yes, yeah, it's so July twenty.
I think we should wait until we have the other policies present, because it, it doesn't seem like it would be fair to change it without them even giving a say on it, so we'll. Bring that up on the seventeenth. Um. I'm sorry, what?
Sir, yes.
Thank you, um, okay, so if there are no set special and regular meeting dates requests, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, it has been moved that we adjourn, uh, there's.
So.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this unanimous and we are adjourned.